Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning at our city council study session. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the role?
Addison.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Tewin.
Here.
Charleston.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Manon.
Blatt.
Here. Thank you. If you're here for agenda items number three or number six, they have both been pulled from the agenda, and so they'll be back on a future agenda. We'll move to agenda item number two is Urban Wildlife Task Force update. Representatives from the Urban Wildlife Task Force will discuss the committee's progress concerning their efforts to educate the public regarding wildlife.
Hello, and thank you for your involvement. My name is Wayne Christensen. I am the Pokatello Urban Wildlife Task Force Committee Chairman. Over two years ago, we came together as a group of concerned citizens. We met at a public forum held by Idaho Fishing Game at their facility. And from this large group, a smaller group representing both sides of the issues appeared and were selected to serve on this committee. The group formed with the Fishing Game as our technical advisors. I assure you, we're not wildlife haters, but rather concerned citizens who recognize challenges facing not only Pokatello community, but many communities across the nation where wildlife interfaces with the communities. As concerned citizens, it became apparent that one reason we were facing growing populations of urban wildlife was due to some systems where watering and feeding of wildlife in the communities. This has encouraged the wildlife to become less fearful of people and the urban wildlife challenges in the neighborhood. This has increased wildlife in backyards, on the roads, damages to property, and threats to citizens. We also became aware of harm being done to the wildlife by citizens who were watering and feeding wildlife with the mistaken impression they were doing something nice because they love wildlife. However, by doing this, they were changing animals' diets patterns, using doing them more potential harm rather than good. In an effort to help curb the growing problem with urban wildlife, the task force has proposed a number of ways to help minimize the challenges of wildlife, such as passing a feeding ordinance, public education, and informational handouts, which have been done in other communities successfully. We have submitted first draft proposals of the ordinance. This draft has undergone some changes based on discussions with others, including the city Pokatello legal department, the law enforcement, animal control. These draft changes reflect areas already being addressed and enforcement, especially the misdemeanor versus infraction issues. We recognize that simply passing a feeding ordinance will not be a cure-all, but rather there's only one means in helping to manage wildlife in the urban settings. We know that wildlife cannot read ordinance, nor that it can read signs, and therefore more means have to be undertaken in order to solve the problem. Citizens will have to explore additional means to help educate the community and create methods to discourage wildlife from moving into and staying in the urban areas and bringing with them their natural predators, causing more challenges to our community. And I'd like to ask Jennifer to do a presentation for us.
So my name is Jennifer Jackson, and I'm the Regional Communications Manager for Idaho Fishing Game.
And I'm Zach Lockyer. I'm the Regional Wildlife Manager with Fishing Game out of the Pokatello.
And like Wayne was saying, we've been serving as technical advisors to the Urban Wildlife Task Force and the efforts that they're making in providing information, even biology and ecology of wildlife, and the kinds of information that they need to move forward with some of their proposals and ideas. And one of those that they presented last year was an idea of a feeding ordinance. And we know we've been talked about this in the past with you, and some of the information we have here is similar to what was shared with before. We're not going to belabor some of those points too much that we've already discussed, but we are going to present you with some updates, some new information, some revisions to the feeding ordinance proposal, and some other information we'd like to share with you. So I'm going to start with this classic slide. This is one we showed last time. So this is what mule deer or wildlife conflicts can look like. I also have a picture of a moose there, too, in an urban setting. So these are taken right here in Pokatello. You have situations where you have deer crossing roadways and even getting hit. We have animals getting trapped in places that are precarious for them, or getting hung up on fences, and certainly issues with wildlife that have even been a bit aggressive. We've also had challenges with animals like turkeys and mountain lions. We get calls about turkeys that are congregating and creating a nuisance for landowners and homeowners. They can be destructive to property, even to vehicles. We get phone calls about mountain lions. We've had situations where we've had to go in and even remove mountain lions, relocate them. These are just some of the calls that we get, but we also deal with other species that we show here and a myriad of others. Believe it or not, we've actually had complaints before from people that, you know, we have phone calls that say, hey, we've got a neighbor feeding deer. We've had complaints from neighbors saying, my neighbor is feeding skunks. My neighbor has named a raccoon and is feeding it. So there's feeding issues going on with other wildlife species as well. I think the point, though, we want to make here is wildlife has always been, have always been on the landscape, has always been part of Pokatello's landscape, and frankly, it's kind of a neat part of the landscape. It provides an aesthetic that's pretty special, and many of us really value that. But there have been some challenges and some conflicts that have arisen that make it a little difficult to sometimes live with wildlife, and so we were just trying to help the Urban Wildlife Task Force address some of those issues and find ways to reduce those conflicts. So how did we get here? No surprise, wildlife populations are doing well in our area. They're thriving in some cases. So is the human population. So we're seeing increases in numbers of people and expansion of urban centers onto wildland and in the urban wildlife interface. We were in 2016 and 2017 the fastest-growing state in the nation. That's dropped a bit, but we're still in the top 10. So people are moving to Idaho, and certainly our communities are growing. And when we were here last time, we had questions from you folks, as well as from our Urban Wildlife Task Force. When you're talking about urban deer, how many animals do we have? And the reality is, we didn't know. Our management and our, when we do surveys and we look at populations, we're looking at wildlife outside of urban areas for the most part, especially those units that we manage for hunting. So we took on that challenge of trying to figure out what it might look like here in an urban setting for a mule deer population. So we conducted a couple of surveys. We're just getting started with these surveys. We're looking to detect trends in our urban population. We already know we have more deer in the wintertime than we do in the summer. That should be expected because we have more wild or non-urban deer that will move down to the urban setting in the winter to get away from deeper snows and cooler temperatures. So we'll see an influx of that in the winter, and then they move back up in the spring. But the reality is, we have urban deer that are living here year-round, and other urban wildlife that are living here year-round. So our first survey in 2018, we went to locations where we know deer reside in our urban areas. We're looking at places like neighborhoods around Johnny Creek and Bannock Highway and so forth. And we counted 269 deer. Keep in mind, that's a minimum. Those are the deer we actually put eyes on. Obviously, we're not seeing every deer. Then we followed up with a second survey in September, just a couple months ago, and then we saw 145 deer. Shouldn't be too surprising. The number was a little lower because at that time, we don't have a bunch of deer coming in from higher elevations. We're going to do another survey in November. We're going to continue these surveys to kind of hone in on some of these trends that, or trying to see if we can detect some trends. One point I want to mention, those buck-to-doe fawn ratios I'm showing you there for December and for September. I think what's really sticking out in our minds is for 100 does, in December, we saw 75 fawns. In September, for 100 does, we saw 82 fawns. What that tells us as wildlife managers are, our does are reproducing, and they are productive. And so we see that those high fawn numbers shows that we're probably having a growing population here in the urban area. So this gets back to one of the issues that one of the conflicts we're seeing here with wildlife in an urban area, and it has to do with feeding of wildlife. We've talked about this before. People mean well. They think they're doing a wonderful thing for wildlife. I've even heard or read quotes in the newspaper and heard on TV that, oh, we've got to help Fishing Game with these deer, so we're going to feed them. We're going to help them with their turkey management, so we're going to feed turkeys. And that's absolutely the opposite of what that does. As we said before, animals become habituated. It changes their behavior. It changes their movements, how bold they become, how habituated to people they are. Sometimes they're aggressive. We've had calls and reports of deer chasing joggers or kicking at dogs. We've had stories about animals hanging out on porches, under decks in garages. You know, and some of that may just be here just because we have deer in the area, but certainly feeding and concentrating animals can contribute to those behaviors. We also have concerns about disease risk. When you congregate animals, you can increase the transmission of diseases, whether it's respiratory illnesses or eye diseases. One word that's been, you know, hanging out in headlines recently is the idea of chronic wasting disease, which is a deadly disease for deer, elk, and moose. It is knocking on Idaho's door in a sense. We don't, we haven't detected it yet here in Idaho, but it has been detected in nearby states. And we know that when you concentrate animals at feed sites, for example, that is a type of disease that can be easily transmitted to animals. When you congregate animals, you can attract unwanted species like mountain lions, coyotes. They see that congregation is kind of like a restaurant that's open every day at the same time, and they know where that's at, and they might change their behavior and come there repeatedly and even be drawn into an area where we're congregating wildlife. Feed is not generally good for wildlife. People tend to feed the wrong thing at the wrong time of year. So in the wintertime, things like apples, hay, corn, it's not digestible for mule deer. It can actually cause them health problems. We've even seen situations where we've had deer dead lying in haystacks in other parts of the region, and we've cut their stomachs open and found stomachs full of hay, but they just couldn't digest it. So the wrong food at the wrong time of the year is not good for deer. It has to do with their complicated gut biology, and it's just not often in their best interest. And then, of course, we have impacts to people from property damage. When animals come and eat plants, and they destroy shrubs and trees, they'll come in and even destroy fences, get hung up on fences. We've seen turkeys come in and damage vehicles and property. And I should also mention, this is probably one that's really been sticking out in people's minds recently, is that it can be dangerous for motorists. And so you might think, well, what does feeding have to do with traffic? When you're artificially concentrating animals, and more importantly, when you're luring them across roadways back and forth with feed sites, those animals put themselves in danger, and they put motorists in danger. So you've seen this slide before. What I want you to note is, the last time I showed you this, or Zach showed this to you, the numbers for mule deer that were killed in Bannock County as a result of collisions with vehicles has actually increased. So it was around 140, 137. Last time, it's 174 as of November 13th, and we still have the rest of the year to go. We've had 448 mule deer killed over the last three years. That number's also increased. And keep in mind, these are the deer we see ITD, Fishing Game, and occasionally people that report those. That's not the deer that have wandered off to die elsewhere. And there is research to show that every deer you see on a roadway that's been hit by a car, there's likely another one somewhere else that's wandered off and died. So you can almost double those numbers based on that research. I think another interesting point to bring up, we've had some information shared by the Pokatello Police Department and the Bannock County Sheriff's Office. But in the Pokatello area, we've had since January 2019, 76 accidents that are directly related to some kind of collision with deer. And when I say Pokatello area, we're talking, you know, Fifth Avenue, Johnny Creek, Bannock Highway, Mead Creek. These are these urban areas where we have people living, and of course, we have deer moving around. And when you're setting up feed sites, that's only going to increase that kind of movement. I'll just show this really quick because this also changed since the last time we met. It used to be, last year, one out of every 151 drivers in Idaho could hit a deer. That's changed. It's now one out of 106. Even the claims, the average cost for repairs to a vehicle, or the average national insurance claim has gone up to $4,341, and this is based on State Farm data. So with all that, we, the Urban Wildlife Task Force was looking at mechanisms for helping people to live with wildlife better, reducing conflicts. One of the topics that's come up is this idea of possibly having some kind of feeding ordinance. And so in the feeding ordinance you reviewed last year, the last time we met, it's still the same, and the idea that the proposed ordinance we put before you is that it would be unlawful for any person to intentionally, knowingly, or recklessly feed or attract wildlife. There would be some exceptions. We know people like to feed birds. They like to feed hummingbirds and put out bird feeders. They like to feed squirrels. Of course, they need to feed their livestock and pets. Obviously, those activities could continue. But we would like to see if this ordinance would go forward, an exclusion for wild turkeys. Those can actually be a problem and have been a problem for us, especially when it comes to people who have fed turkeys and congregated them in places where it's been a nuisance and a conflict for neighbors. In the past, we drew some questions about whether or not feeding waterfowl should be included. You know, we don't recommend feeding waterfowl for the same reasons you wouldn't feed deer or feed turkeys. They have been nuisances in other communities. If this is something, we would be happy whether we left that into the ordinance or pulled it out. Either way, it's not a huge nuisance here in our community yet, but at the same time, it could be. So that, we would be fine either way with waterfowl, but certainly feeding wild turkeys is going to be detrimental. Yes?
I know there are people that feed the waterfowl down on the highway pond down along Bannock Highway. We have to pay to get the geese removed from the golf course. I think we've worked with you, and that's pretty costly to get those geese out of there because they're detrimental to the golf course. They can decimate it with their feeding and the end results.
Sure. And I should also say, I've seen geese hit on the roadways as well. You know, we had a goose that was lying dead on the side of the road. The diet that they're eating, which is usually bread, right, that actually can create a biological condition called angel wing, but it's a deformity in their bones because it doesn't have the right nutrients. And you'll actually, you can actually create situations. I've seen this in other communities in the U.S. where we have birds that have deformed wings and they can't even fly anymore. So there's real reasons to exclude, there's real reasons to include waterfowl in the feeding ordinance if it were to go forward, certainly. And we would certainly support that if that was a recommendation you chose to follow. Seeds, nectar, other materials, if they were going to be in bird feeders, the ordinance would ask that they would be in feeders that are at least five feet above ground. The reason for that is, you know, if you've got feed on the ground, if you're feeding other kinds of birds or wildlife, deer, turkeys, waterfowl, other animals can come in and eat that. The idea is, if it's an elevated feeder some type, you're going to hopefully reduce the feeding, unintentional feeding of certain species. This ordinance would apply to all areas within Pokatello city limits. And also, when you talk about violations, what kind of violation would be incurred if you were feeding? It's been a back-and-forth discussion. You know, last time we met, we talked about it being a misdemeanor. This time, you know, we're thinking, well, maybe it could be an infraction. The idea here is, we'd just like to see some type of ordinance that holds, first of all, educates folks about why you don't feed, but kind of holds them responsible for not feeding. Sometimes you need that push, or you need that rule to help you make better choices. And, you know, if it were an infraction, one discussion we've had with animal services and with other community members is the idea that, you know, with similar ordinances like with the barking dog ordinance, if there's a report of a feeding site, the animal services, for example, could send out a letter saying, hey, you're violating a city ordinance, and you need to cease and desist. And we could even provide educational materials as to why that's not a good idea to feed. And then, similar to with the barking dog ordinance, if they don't cease and desist, an animal control officer could go out and talk with them personally. And perhaps if it came to that, even write a citation. So whether it's a misdemeanor or an infraction, there are ways to, I think, address the notification, the enforcement of that. Fishing Game would not be enforcing this ordinance. That's a little different than what we proposed originally at one point. Our role would be as technical advisor to the city, to the task force. We have other skills. We can contribute to this effort, but enforcement would not be part of that. So what would a feeding ordinance do? It's not going to eliminate urban wildlife or conflicts, but it will reduce the potential for those conflicts. It will reduce potential for human safety and property damage. It will force animals to adopt better, more natural behaviors. We've already talked about some of these issues, but it could reduce roadkill, public safety concerns, private property damage, abnormal behavior from mule deer, turkeys, and other wildlife. It will reduce attracting unwanted species such as mountain lions. Granted, we had mountain lions before Pokatello was established. We have mountain lions now. We'll have mountain lions in the future, but we don't want to contribute or exacerbate the issues with wildlife, including mountain lions, by feeding operations.
So when mountain lions get used to coming into the city, they don't restrict their diet to game animals?
No. It's a really good point. So they may come in for their primary prey species, which may be deer. And especially if there's a feed site, like I said, it's that restaurant that's open every day at the same time, and they show up. But if they don't get a deer, or, you know, they're just, for some reason, aren't hunting at that point for deer, they might find something else along the way. It might be, it might be a domesticated animal. It might be a pet. It could be a livestock animal. So, yeah, they're coming down here, but they are opportunistic, and they will take other animals for sure. And that's true of coyotes and other wildlife. Of course, there's disease risks we talked about and health issues associated with poor diet. We would hope to reduce by removing feeding. Pokatello's not alone with this challenge. There are other communities throughout the United States that have had to deal with this very issue, and they've actually implemented feeding ordinances. Some here in our neck of the woods, you know, in Montana, Utah, and even recently, we've read some feeding ordinances that were in Oregon. Part, this is kind of something I wanted to share with you that's kind of new, what we've been working on this last year, is, you know, this idea of a feeding ordinance is just one tool in that toolbox. It's an important tool. It's going to be invaluable, we feel, but it's just one mechanism at getting at the issue. There's other things that we can do. And we've been discussing with the Urban Wildlife Task Force. They've been going out and getting ideas, but one component that keeps coming up over and over again is the idea of education. I can assure you, I've been in this position for 14 years now, not that I'm counting, but I've been doing this education part for a long time. And I know people, before I got here, were doing it as well. But as a task force, they've worked with Fishing Game really to help get the information out to the media through print and TV in the last year. The Urban Wildlife Task Force has begun developing handouts, bookmarks, which I think you may have some of those items up there. We're even working on a brochure. Topics that would be discussed are, here are the kinds of plants that you might plant to be resistant to deer or less likely to be eaten by deer. Here are structures you could put in your yard that might protect your fruit trees. Or here's some fencing options that might reduce interactions with deer, but still not be a problem for them as far as movement in the community. We've talked about, we've got a brochure in development on the perils of feeding. So these are educational tools we could get out to the public through, whether we leave them at libraries, put them in city offices, up at Idaho Fishing Game, whether we put this information and make it available on our website. We've even talked about working with local real estate agents and companies to maybe put it in their packets when they encourage people to move to the area. Hey, here's some things you can do to live with our awesome wildlife we have in this region. Just, there's lots of ways you can get that information out there. Fishing Game has worked this year to get presentations into the schools. I put together a simple presentation on why we don't feed wildlife, and I gave it at several schools this past year, and I hope to do that again this year. And other ideas, we've talked about, I know that Urban Wildlife Task Force has mentioned maybe participating in the environmental fair with the booth, making their information available on our Facebook page. We could record PSAs for radio. The list goes on and on. There's lots that we can do with education. So just as summary, wildlife will always be a part of Idaho, will always be a part of Pokatello, and I don't think any of us want to see that change. Again, one of the reasons we, many of us like to live here, it's just we'd like to see some of those conflicts, some of those issues reduced, and there are ways to get at that. One would be a feeding ordinance. It will reduce habituation and poor behaviors from not just people, but from the wildlife themselves. It can reduce conflict, property damage. It will reduce some of our safety concerns. Frankly, it's better for wildlife. It's helpful to wildlife not to feed. I know that goes against human nature, but that is the truth. And ultimately, it could reduce abundance and frequency of animals living in city limits. Again, it's just one tool in the toolbox, but it would be an invaluable one, and it's a great starting point. And with that, our presentation is done, and we're open to any questions you have.
Okay. Council questions? Linda?
I agree with you, and we talked about this last time, the importance of education. I think that's such a key component in the success of this. And you talked about what you're doing and what additional things you could do. One of the things we were concerned about last time was budget for that, and who would handle that, and who would be responsible. The things that you just mentioned that you're doing and would do, it sounds like we would not need to budget for those things. Is that correct?
Correct. That's right.
So this would not require additional funding?
Nope. I don't see that happening. We have members of the Urban Wildlife Task Force that are donating their time outside of their regular lives and jobs, putting this information together. Denise has worked really hard on putting together some handouts and some brochures. I'll be working on a brochure as well. We've talked about how we can get money to print this. I have some budget money that I can work with as a communications manager with my agency. You know, there's also grants and things we can look for. There's ways to do education, and I'm doing education anyway. That's been part of my job, and it's been part of my job since I've been here. So this is just part and parcel of what I do. And so those presentations I'm doing are similar to presentations I've been doing this entire time. It just had a different focus, so.
And maybe there's some things the city could do that would not involve costs, but like adding your information onto our website, or onto our app, or things like that?
Sure. Absolutely.
But it looks like budget-wise, we're, we would be in pretty good shape.
Right. I don't think there would be any, you know, any cause or concern there.
The other question I have is about enforcement. So that was a little different this time. You all would not be involved in enforcement. Does that mean it would be the police?
So it depends how you set it up. So similar to the barking dog ordinance that you have right now. So Animal Control sends a letter when there's been a report, and then they notify that individual that they've had a report. And those reports can even be anonymous. Somebody can call and say, I've got a neighbor. I don't want them to know who I am, but their dog's barking. If that complaint continues, they can send an officer to outlook at that situation and kind of evaluate what's going on with that barking dog. And again, that would be a similar situation here with the feed ordinance, if it became an ordinance. What happens with the barking dog ordinance is if that issue continues, they ask the reporting party, the person that made the call, hey, for us to write a citation, we need you to document somehow what you're experiencing, whether you've got video of the dog barking, whether you're recording it in a journal with dates and times. Give us some information. And then if they write a citation for that barking dog, they do require, as I understand, the reporting party to sign that citation. That's an example of what could happen with a feed ordinance. So it could be a letter, hey, you know, you're not supposed to be feeding. This is a violation of an ordinance. Here's the issues with feeding. Ultimately, if somebody really wants a citation to be written, they'd have to be willing to video or record. I saw so-and-so dropping pellets and apples in the front yard for mule deer, for turkeys, or whatever, and record that. And then an officer, a suggestion would be then that an officer from Animal Services could go out and write that citation. The reason for Fishing Game not being able to write The reason for Fishing Game not being able to write citations is, we were directed from the state office that Fishing Game, the state agency, cannot enforce city ordinances. So that's where that came from. So we were not, we did not know that when we dove in. We were all on board to step in and do what we had to do. But we had direction from our state offices that that's something we can do, but in fact, we can participate in all other aspects, which would be education, working as a technical advisor, helping with whatever we need to, providing survey data and other information.
So I have a little concern with the state agency not being willing to help or enforce state or city ordinances. When I look at a police department, the state police officers pull people over in town all the time for speeding and for different things. When you, when you look at different agencies, we've got DEQ in here enforcing and inflicting, pushing the city ordinances as well. And so Fishing Game now is a new thing, we don't enforce, we don't do that. We're going to let municipalities and cities do that. I've got a big concern over a state agency, excuse me, a state agency not being willing to enforce or help or be a part of that enforcement piece. We're saying, we need this, you need to do this, and then you need to enforce it, and you need to make sure. We're looking at running a tight ship here. When we start doing something like this, our animal control officers may or may not have time to get out and do this. We could be looking at hiring another two or three animal control officers to enforce this. I mean, I'm just, I'm looking at and taking input from citizens all the time on things like this, and so what do we say to that? How do I defend that?
With Fishing Game, I don't know if it's just in our policies. I'm not sure exactly how that direction came. It did come from our legal, and so there must, I don't know if you're aware, there's something in our policies that are specific to that. I can tell you, there are other city ordinances in other communities where a city may have a rule for the age of a person that can fish on a pond, and we as our officers aren't enforcing that. Their city, that's a city ordinance that, for example, Soul Springs has with one of their ponds. You know, we stock the pond with fish, we provide that, we do Free Fishing Day events at that pond, and we help anglers fish, but our officers aren't able to enforce the city ordinance there. So without knowing fully why that is, my understanding is it's some kind of policy thing, and I certainly could get more information to you so I can get that exactly, you know, defined for you. What I would tell you is, just having it on the books as an ordinance, even an infraction, just having that out there, I think is going to make a difference. And I can tell you personally, when we talk about like the cellphone ordinance that went through, I was one of those folks that had my phone up to my ear, and I'm driving, and I'm multitasking, and I knew I wasn't supposed to be doing it. My gosh, I've got so much to get done. And when that became an ordinance, my phone is on the seat next to me and shut off until I get where I'm going. So, and so we're hoping that something like a feeding ordinance might get that information out to the public and get them thinking about, wow, this is serious, you know, we really shouldn't be feeding, not just because it's the wrong thing to do for the benefits of wildlife, you know, it doesn't benefit wildlife, but also because it's actually against the city code, and we want to follow the rules.
So I'm not against the ordinance. I think it's probably a really good thing. I'm just against the idea that we have a state agency that will not help enforce an ordinance. I disagree wholeheartedly with that, if we have ordinances and stuff. So I would absolutely like a more definitive answer of why the Fishing Game isn't interested or willing. Interested is the wrong terminology. But willing to be a part of that enforcement.
And I would even say, willing is not even, it might even be that we're not able to. And again, I don't know if that's a policy issue.
I think that's arguable. I think it's more willing than able, because we have state agencies that enforce things and city ordinances all the time. And so it sounds like more of a willing, not an able, to me. But I would love an explanation of what that looks like.
Sure, and I would, I'm sorry, I don't have the specifics on that, but I will absolutely get that.
I see this as an added expense to city animal control and stuff. I know these guys are running like crazy right now anyway, and we've got a cat population that's crazy, we've got a deer population we're going to add on top of that, and then we've got dogs in the middle of that stuff, and skunks and raccoons. And at some point, Fishing Game is responsible for wild animals and wild game, Animal Control's responsible for domestic animals and stuff, and we've got to work together. I'm just a little bit nervous about throwing something else like that.
Surely enough, we've got me with the Fishing Game Commission, they're meeting at Regional Office today. Virgil's here, right?
You mean Director Schreiber?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, maybe we can do that. I laugh because I don't know if we're finished yet enough, but we'll see. I would love to do that. But I am interested in a real, true explanation of, now we're just not going to do it because it's a city ordinance. Or a state agency, that doesn't fly with me very, very good. And then I had another question. Are we moving as a city into being responsible for wildlife when we do this, opposed to letting the people that are responsible for it? I mean, are we moving into your responsibilities now?
So the issue is, we have tools in our toolbox that we use as wildlife managers, but, you know, we have hunting, we have trapping, we have, you know, other tools like that. But those are not tools that we can implement. Again, you know, we can't necessarily set up. I mean, we could set up a short-range hunt, I suppose, in the city with willing to change city ordinances and so forth. I mean, our toolbox is rather limited, is what we can do as far as those kinds of efforts. You know, other communities have done other things to try and get at this, again, feeding ordinances. We knew of a community, it was Ogden, that actually the city hired, for the lack of a better word, a hitman, a sharpshooter for, with short-range weapons for a mule deer population that was causing problems. I know the city in Pocatello, or Idaho Falls, hired folks to come in and remove water fowl from the rivers. But again, those were city actions. Do you have anything to add to that?
I don't. I mean, we went as far last winter as to draft a proposal for a hunting season inside city limits, but we had to pull that because there's an ordinance prohibiting discharge of firearms within city limits. And so the tools we have available to manage populations don't apply inside city limits right now. And if some of those things change, we're here willing and able to help, but we're limited there.
I can almost guarantee you'd get your big buck if we had a... There's no question. I would go see Jim's house, and, I mean, we have a mule deer problem. I went hunting on opening day, mule deer hunting, and I didn't see a track until 3:00 in the afternoon. So the mule deer are here, they're not in where you can hunt them.
That's what they call vegetarian.
Vegetarian. Roger had a...
I have a couple questions. When there is a deer killed on the roadway, who is it that removes that carcass?
So we have a procedure. So if it's on the interstate, it's usually ITD that goes and gets those, they're better prepared to remove those animals safely. If it's on a roadway in town, we, if it's a danger to motorists, like it's lying in the middle of the road, or on the side of the road, Fishing Game's called and we will respond. If it's lying in someone's driveway, you know, we'll ask them, hey, you know, can you remove that yourself? A lot of times, people can't, they don't have the ability to, they might not have a truck, or they might not have the physical ability. So we can come and remove those as well, and we haul them to the dump. I should also mention, we have a salvage law, so we do have people that actually go and remove roadkill themselves, especially if it's fresh roadkill, and they can salvage those, and they just have to fill out an online permit, for lack of a better word, to allow them to do that. As far as deer that are in like non, they're not in areas where we'd have conflicts with motorists, or they're not lying on someone's front porch. So if you're talking about a deer that's stuck down in a drainage that's gone off and died, or maybe it's stuck, you know, in a river somewhere, we don't remove those, we just get those that are kind of the priority. And it's Fishing Game that will do those, and we tend to, we have a duty officer that works every day. They handle wildlife emergencies, wildlife calls, help answer the phones, sell licenses, whatever, and of course, they take those dead deer calls as well.
So Big Game, you pretty much do it, or ITD does it? How about small, non-game animals like skunks and raccoons, and who removes those?
We don't remove those.
So those are under the domain of our...
Or just under whoever, you know, but somebody, somebody has a skunk that's killed in front of their house, you know, they might move it themselves, or a raccoon.
I doubt very many people would do it.
Yeah, but we don't, yeah, our priorities are, you know, we're talking about priorities, and so we understand that dead deer can be an issue for safety, it can be an issue. Again, if you've got some person that, again, doesn't have a vehicle, or maybe they're not physically able to remove a dead buck from their front lawn in town, you know, obviously we can help with that. But the other item, non-game, the smaller animal squirrels, dead birds, you know, that's pretty, that would be low on our list, and that's something we would respond to.
I'm seeing our animal control person make a comment.
He's anxious to say something. You'll need to come up here, but do we have any other questions real quick?
Well, I just had a comment. As I was looking at this agenda item, it doesn't say action item, and all it says is that we're getting an update on educating the public regarding wildlife. So I didn't expect that we were talking about the ordinance today. I mean, I don't know to what extent we can give guidance on that, but I also have a big concern about the burden that this will be on the city, so that's why I was going to ask for you to come up and give us that update. Because we remember, we just in our last budget cycle, had requests for more staff at the animal shelter, and we're not super interested in continuing to add and add because that's just more of a burden on the taxpayers. So I wanted to get that update. I want to make it clear, I'm 100% not in favor of people feeding deer, I wish they would not do it. I just, I feel like if it's super important to the fishing game, the fishing game has got to be willing to do it and not just shift that burden onto the city and to the taxpayers. So, please.
So Josh Collins, Pocatello Services. Coming from an ACO standpoint, we pick up all of the other animals. We pick up all the dead sculls, we pick up if they're in the roadway, swirls, raccoons, whatever. We picked up, myself has picked up hundreds of deer off the side of Anac Highway. We will call, and we're not against the ordinance either, but it is going to take extra manpower. And then the question lies, how much jurisdiction do we have? So where it comes to, where we found the hard line is, like, people will call Fishing Game, and Fishing Game, what we've been told, not saying this is, but what we're being told is, when people call Fishing Game, Fishing Game is saying it's inside city limits, it's the city's problem. So we don't deal, and I'm not saying that's what's going on exactly, I'm just, this is what we're being told when we get called. So if we're going to start dealing with wildlife, we're going to need extra training with dealing with wildlife, because we're animal control, and we deal with mostly domestic animals. But we do deal with wildlife all the time. We constantly pick up all of the, like I said, the 1045 is what we call them. So we are actually picking those up.
So I guess in terms of the enforcement of this, if we're able to cut down, I think it was 179 deer killed within the city limits?
Yes.
If you weren't picking up...
174.
174. If you're not picking up as many deer, which takes amount of time, and you're sending out letters to people who are named as feeders, it seems to me like we're really curtailing some of your work instead of adding to your work. Because I would say it'd take an hour or more to go out, pick up a deer, and dispose of it. And if every time we save one of those fatalities, we've turned an hour of your time into sending out five or six letters.
Okay. So if we're comparing it to the barking aspect, so we do send out letters, like, that's what we're comparing to, and she's correct, we send out a barking letter on the initial complaint. And then if we get a secondary complaint, we send an officer out. So that's fine, sending a letter doesn't take very strong, cut it out, and put it in and send it out, that's not a problem. It's the secondary and the follow-ups. That's where the problem is going to lie. So if we're sending officers out to constantly, and then now Animal Control is dealing with wildlife inside the city. So we can only educate at that point, but how far, how far do we deal with them, is the question. Are we only limited to issuing like this citation for feeding, or now that we're dealing with wildlife, we're going to start fielding with all the wildlife calls? We used to help people trap skunks, we've gotten away from that. That's going to open the door to go back to doing basically that. We've been trying to get away from wildlife calls because we're not trained to do so.
I think this ordinance is pretty specific to the feeding issue. I don't know that it's specific to trapping skunks and stuff like that.
Oh, I understand, but my concern is, does that open the door leading to something else?
The only other concern is we open it.
Well, are we opening the door right now, is the question that he's asking? Doing this, which it sounds like most of the council really truly is in favor of an ordinance or something for people to not feed deer, but we're not interested in an added expense because of this ordinance, and then opening the door so that we're picking up skunks, and we're picking up raccoons, and we're, and now we're chasing and herding turkeys down the street to get them out of the city limits and stuff like that. I don't know that the council's interested in adding another couple, two or three animal control people because we've opened the door.
I don't see that in this ordinance. I see this ordinance specifically addressing feeding. I don't see it saying we're expanding our concern to how we take care of other animals like the rodents, the rockchucks and stuff like that. We're trying to take care of one of the biggest issues in terms of personal property damage, in terms of cars and houses, where they're feeding on trees and everything else, shrubs. We're trying to do a education, we're multitasking with the Fishing Game to do both. I think it enhances our city to have some sort of ordinance that is narrow like this. I don't see it as big and expansive. And I think that if we can cut down, if we cut the roadkills in half, we've got plenty of time for you to go visit somebody then.
And again, we're not, I'm not saying I disagree with the ordinance, that's not what he's saying.
Wholeheartedly disagree we're going to cut roadkills in half.
Now, you said that about another ordinance we put, and we've had very little, very little feedback on that.
So a couple questions that I have. Number of calls, how many calls do you have? Do you take on this?
On feeding, or just deer on the road, or what specifically?
Calls on wildlife within city limits that we would be shifting from the Fishing Game to Animal Control.
So those calls are, the calls we get on a daily basis are everything from, we have a dead deer in our front porch, to I have, you know, we've got bats in our barn, or whatever. A lot of those calls, we just take care of right over the phone, or like I said, we, you know, and I'm sorry, people are telling you we don't pick up deer in city limits. I can assure you, I have a shoulder that would tell you otherwise. So, and I know we're not the only ones that, but we appreciate that you've done that. I mean, that's great, but we do pick up deer in city limits. We just don't always get, you know, the deer on the back 17 acres of someone's property, or the deer that's in the drainage, you know, 100 yards, 200 yards down, you know, in the drainage, because those aren't high priority. But, you know, we wouldn't expect you guys to answer calls like, what do we do about bats in our barn, or, you know, I've got a woodpecker that's pecking on our house, what are some things we can do, or those kinds of calls. The issue here particularly would be if there was an ordinance, you know, like I said, we were not able to enforce that ordinance based on the direction I've received from the state. The other kinds of calls, you know, when we get skunk calls, we have a skunk, or we have a, you know, a marmot or something. We have traps that people can check out for us. There's a deposit that they have to put down, but they get their deposit back. There are live traps, they can trap those animals. The tricky part is with that, is they have to either dispatch the animal, or they can release the animal, but they have to release it to private property with the private owner's permission. So you just can't run out to be a land, land or Forest Service land, because that's their role, you can't just release wildlife to their landscape. But if you find somewhere, somebody says it's okay to release it, you can release it to them, or you can put it down yourself. But we actually lend out traps basically for free to trap those kinds of critters. So I'm not sure, do you have anything to add to that?
So, I mean, we're taking multiple urban wildlife calls every single day at the office from woodpeckers, bats, skunks, deer, moose.
Mountain lions.
Mountain lions. And we're, you know, we're talking to those folks, if it requires a site visit, we are going out on those. So it is a lot, our phones are ringing pretty consistently throughout the year on urban wildlife.
And you would continue to do that?
Yeah.
All you're doing is saying that the city... All you're doing is saying that the city in a very narrow way is going to say no feeding inside the city limits. That's all we're going to be asked to enforce with this ordinance. Nothing else. We're not taking over any of your other duties. We're simply saying very narrowly that when we have a problem that's starting to congregate because of people feeding, we will take a responsive position to try to deter that. That's all this ordinance does.
Can I, can I interject? You know, I've, I've been involved with the Urban Wildlife Task Force since before I became on this council. About three months ago, I met with fishing game and animal control. We all got together in one room and we talked about everything from voles to moose and where the responsibility for the wildlife is among the various agencies. And I have to admit, I've been a little irresponsible. I, my intent with doing that was to try to define the responsibility so that a citizen would know if they have a snake in their garden, what to do about it, who to call or how to handle it. And I've been writing a document and I, I'm about a third done and I haven't given enough attention. I guess I need to step up my priorities. And that's what we talked about was if, if, if dispatch gets a call on a bat in a belfry, who, whose responsibility is that? Is that animal control or is that fishing game? Or is it the landowner, the homeowner? The landowner's responsibility to manage that. Hopefully with the idea that we'll have some definition and, and decide if it's a moose, it's fishing game's issue. If it's a snake in your backyard, it's a bull snake, and I intend to put pictures in this, let the damn thing go and don't worry about it. If it's a rattlesnake on the west bench, which we had a serious problem with this last summer, then that's a different issue. And I, I think it will help to define what you're talking about, Mr. Mayor. Some, some of the responsibility of, because there's really, there's three agencies here that, three different areas of responsibility. It's fishing game, it's animal control, and it's the homeowner or the landowner.
May I ask, mention also as a homeowner, I want to know who I could call or who I should call or if I can call anybody else to, to help solve a problem. Right now, we don't have any answers. And, and that's part of the problem. So we need to find some way we can get those answers. And for us, the infraction, or not the infraction, but the ordinance helps us. And I know just by speaking, speaking to some people personally who used to put out their pumpkins at the end of the season, let the deer feed on or other wild animals. Once we started drawing it, bringing it to their attention, they stopped doing that. And that helped to stop some of the problem with the migration through their property. And so, and my own property, I have a lot of apples and I used to compost until I realized that the reason why those twenty deer were in my backyard was because I was putting the apples out there. And so I started collecting and getting rid of them. I'm starting to get a lot less deer there, but the deer were already there. And so each year I see them still growing and they keep repeating a pattern or behavior that I haven't been able to stop. And I need to have solutions to that problem. And that's what we're looking for. And I think an infraction, for many people, just hearing that there's an infraction or a misdemeanor, the feeding ordinance stops people from doing certain types of behaviors. They're not beneficial.
And so you're really talking about the deterrent of having an ordinance versus the emphasis on enforcement. Just you, you, I, I think what I'm hearing from you folks is there is a deterrent in just having an accountability. And when that deterrent comes in, it really will lessen enforcement.
That's true. I believe that very strongly. And also we believe that this is just one tool, just one thing that helps with that management of the wildlife in the urban setting. We know there's many other things that have to be done besides that.
Well, I'm going to make a comment. I, I've lived in my house on the west bench for twenty-seven years. And I've seen a couple of times deer hit. Three times this year, I've seen deer lying on the road on Valley View or the road coming down from Valley View. Um, that's, and I know that the first time in that twenty-seven years, the last two years, I've had my decorative trees trimmed by the deer. Okay. So I, I know there's incident, my neighborhood's also where I think you've captured a couple cougars up in that area. I think that speaks of how we have to step out to protect because a cougar does not necessarily distinguish between a human or, it's something that's moving and is available. Now, a child walking on that west bench and those cougars were daytime views. Uh, they could, they could wander off. And I just think there's a safety factor here. A, a big buck, it doesn't care what, what's moving, it'll attack a human being. There's all kinds of incidents just here in southeast Idaho of that happening when they're in the rut. And I just see this as a proactive way of helping people to understand that we are in an urban wildlife situation and we've got to do proactive things to help diminish those encounters. And part of that is an action of an ordinance.
I'd like, I'm, as animal control and animal services, we're, we're not opposed to helping. We want to work with fishing game because we, that's, we, we realize that. We, and we don't want bad blood or anything like that. We, we want to work with them. But my question was, where does it lead? And, you know, we mentioned bats, we, we, we go to bat calls. We just had one this week. We, we go to those calls. We, we go to the snake calls because we want to help the people in the city. Um, fishing game can always respond. If we can respond, we respond. So these are, we deal with that in wildlife pretty much, if not daily, daily basis. So again, it's just one of those, how, how far are we going with it? That's, that's all it is.
And what I'm saying is, as I read this proposal, we're not changing anything but the feeding. That's all we're attacking. And we might be upping our input in terms of education, but we're really going to count on fishing game to do the primary role of education.
So I have a, a couple of other things and that's, it's, that trapping, when we have somebody that traps within the city limits, do they work with fishing game or do they work with animal control or both?
Depending on what they're trapping.
Trapping a coyote?
A coyote.
Yeah, we've had coyotes. So we've had to trap a number of times in town.
When, so like the coyote, the incidents that I, I can, I can tell you that we dealt with, that we've had, um, at, um, Sacagawea Park. We, we were having something and then over at Amile Cherry Hill. We, we were getting complaints, animal control's getting complaints. We were the initial responders to that. We were laying eyes on it and then we would contact fishing game. Um, and then I think what we did is we ended up contracting somebody out to actually come in and trap them. Uh, and I think the city was the one that, I, I'm not a hundred percent, and it might've been fishing game. I just know that we worked because we, we drive by and check the traps regularly.
We had wildlife services, um, under USDA because that's, that's what they do around with things like coyotes. They're, they're better equipped to handle that.
So, so when it comes to feeding, I think, I, I mean, I think most of us are definitely in the idea of let's have an ordinance, that, that's, that's do this. I think the question and, and concern really truly is the expense. And, and I know that Roger's saying it's not just simple, it's easy stuff. It's not a big deal. I, it's, this is very minimal and stuff, but our experts and our animal control is saying, no, we don't have the time. We don't have the people. We're not going to be able to do it. There is going to be an added expense. So our experts are saying, we're out in the field all the time. We're doing this. We're, it's going to cost more. It's going to take more efforts. We have to have, be trained more. We have to have other things. So that, for me, is where I am concerned is this, this idea of opening Pandora's box a little bit is a little concerning to me that we are going to jump into this wholeheartedly blindly saying, yeah, it's not going to cost anything when our experts are saying it is absolutely going to cost us more money on this. And so that's, that's a concern. It's a balancing act that we're going to have to figure out what to do with. There's, there's no question. You add an ordinance, you add a law to the books, somebody has to enforce that law. And so that was, that was that. You had a...
I might be misreading, but I don't want this to be perceived as Idaho fishing game, this is Idaho fishing game ordinance. It's not. And...
I don't think anybody says that it is. I think that everybody recognizes this is a community that said, look, we need help with our, with wildlife here. We need help. And fishing game is part of that help. City's part of that help. Citizens are part of that help. We, I think everybody understands that.
I, I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, the city needs to perceive this as a problem to be able to pass an ordinance and assist with, you know, making it, um, successful as well as ourselves and animal control and whoever else. But, um, you know, we just, we don't manage, it's wildlife in city limits, but we don't manage them in city limits because we, we can't. We're very limited there. And we can't without the city coming to us and willing to make changes and adjustments. And then we can work with you to implement other, other tools. But this is, I, I just wanted to make that clear.
So do you in any future, the next fifty years even, see the state legislature taking this on at a state level opposed to individual municipalities? Does this become a...
Seems like that'd be the way to go so that then you could enforce it, right?
It does seem like that would be the way. Is there any work going that way? Has fishing game ever entertained the thought?
My, my thought is that it, it's so difficult because every community is so different from social perspectives, what the urban wildlife are. I've dug into a lot of what other communities have done and issues they deal with. And, um, urban wildlife in Sun Valley and urban wildlife in Pocatello and how you tackle that. I think that'd be hard to do at a state level with the diversity in our state and, you know, from Coeur d'Alene to, um, there's lots of communities in Idaho that are wrestling with the same issue, contacting fishing game, trying to figure out answers. Um, Mackey Idaho's going through this right now. Hayden Idaho up in, um, north in the Panhandle. And so I think it'd be hard for a legislature to implement something statewide that, that fits.
Have you guys asked though? Like, I mean, has it been explored?
Has it been asked? Has it been explored? Well, and, and also a follow-up to that very quickly is feeding wildlife in Pocatello, Idaho has the same effect on wildlife in Sun Valley or Hayden or Coeur d'Alene as, as anywhere else. And so a feeding, anti-feeding statute for wild game seems to me like it makes sense on a state level.
Interestingly enough, the Idaho Department of Ag does have a ban on feeding on, in counties that border Wyoming, Wyoming, because of brucellosis concerns. So if you live in a county that borders Wyoming, you cannot feed big game. And if you do, then you're violating Department of Ag rules and they can issue a citation.
Who enforces that?
Idaho Department of Ag. Cause it's their rule.
So is that what...
But that has to deal with disease issues with, because brucellosis can be transmitted between big game and livestock. And of course livestock industry is, you know, is a major part of Idaho's, you know, economy and so forth. Um, you know, so there are, there have been ways, like Idaho Department of Ag has done that. Um, you know, I, personally, I mean, yeah, I mean, it would be great if we had a law that was statewide, but you know, I, I, I'm with Zach. I don't know. I don't know.
I think you're going to see an effort to do that, Mr. Mayor, with the threat of chronic wasting disease. Uh, there was recently a study in Canada and they fed macaque monkeys contaminated CWD deer meat and one hundred percent of the monkeys contracted a sponge form encephalopathy. Uh, that disease is six miles from the Idaho border, has been detected there. We probably have it and just haven't analyzed the right animal yet. One of the problems with those folded prions is you can't get rid of them. And if we concentrate deer at, in people's yards around here and we get a CWD infected animal, when they eat and they, they drop saliva and feces and urine onto the ground, those prions are there and they don't go away. In actuality, they're actually picked up by the plants carried up and the next animal that eats it or the next kid that rolls in it is contaminated with those prions. And I think we have a serious safety thing here in southeast Idaho with the coming of CWD to our, to our area.
Well, I don't, I don't argue that. And I, and I, there again, when it comes to this ordinance, I'm in favor of it. I just want to make sure we're going in with our eyes wide open. And I'm curious if it is this big of a problem and an issue, why our fishing game on a state level has not addressed the issue. We've had chronic waste disease for over a decade.
Nineteen sixty-seven.
There you go. A number of decades. And, and yet we have buried our head in the sand at the state level. Not these two. You guys are doing your job. But at state level that should have addressed this...
It's agriculture that's fighting it. They don't want the restrictions on the farming of wildlife. And that's what it would come down to. And that's where it's a political problem with the farming of wildlife, whether it's, whether it's whitetail, mule deer, moose elk, whatever it might be. Uh, this disease is now in Norway because somebody sold some contaminated whitetail here to somebody in Norway for a farm. Now they've got, they've got it over there. Uh, it's all, it's going all over the world. One of the potential problems is you talk about prions in, in the ground. Voles are everywhere and they eat those contaminated dead carcasses and voles could be one of our real serious problems with transmitting this. And it's, it's a problem that isn't going to go away. There is no cure for this.
Yeah, I think there's no, no question it's not going to go away. It's just, it's weird that we aren't willing to address it on a state level if it's a state issue. And we depend on, we depend on municipalities to do this.
Well, just one more comment. I think that, um, it would be great if the state legislature would look at this, but also, um, I agree with what you were saying. I think this, I'm certainly in favor of this ordinance and would love to see us pass this, but I think we need to have a, a realistic idea of what it would mean for us. I mean, in terms of cost, in terms of staffing, um, what is going to be the impact on us and what, what is going to be the cost? Um, and I think that's a, a valid concern, but to me, that doesn't mean not passing it. It just means we need to know that.
So, so who are we going to task with studying the cost?
I think that, I think that, um, what I would like to see, because we're, we're not going to take any action on it today, because we want to make sure that we understand what those costs are. I'd like fishing game to let us know or get an idea of how many calls we're looking at on a monthly basis. And I don't know if you have a way to track that. I don't know if you've tracked it in the past, but if you can do something like that and give us an idea. I would also like to know what trainings are going to cost. And I would have our, our animal services look into that, find out what it's going to cost to, to get training on, on, uh, wildlife, uh, management and get us an estimate of what we're going to, what we're going to be really truly looking at.
Administrative. Administrative. So with letters and stuff in mail.
And I think that cost, cost analysis needs to look at how many accidents officers investigate.
Agreed.
Between deer and cars, the cost to the human population in terms of the damages, four thousand dollars or something per, per wreck. And we got to do a cost basis analysis and say, how much are we going to invest and how much will this precipitate in, in containing losses? That's the way to do the whole picture. And we need to see then what the projections are for the lessening of officers investigating accidents, the lessening of our animal control people for picking up carcasses, the, the anticipation of the decline in terms of enforcement actions, because the more this is on the books, the more we should see a decline in people feeding. So there should be a projection out that says this is an action we're taking proactively with the anticipation that eventually we will not be doing much enforcement in terms of feeding. You got to get a whole picture going here.
So, so in your analysis, if you can just get an analysis on administrative costs, on time and costs and personnel to do these things, include what, if we anticipate reducing the calls from this or not, find out what that looks like and everything. If we can get some calls and some ideas and numbers of what the fishing game are dealing with. I don't want to make this so complicated that next year at this time, we're back here having this discussion. I would like to have this done or at least so we can have an understanding of what it looks like in the first of the year so that we can move on this. Because this is, this task force has been going, well, Rick, you've been on the thing for two years.
About two and a half years.
So it's been going for two and a half to three years. I know we've got some citizens that have been dealing with it for twenty-five or thirty years.
I'm on the committee. I don't know if this is appropriate, but I am one of the ones that's been there from the very beginning on this committee, never missed a meeting. But I have a comment. Is it appropriate or not?
Come on up here and tell us who you are. It's really not that we're going to let you do it because...
Okay. Well, I'm a little bit more than the public. Denise England, and I live on Country Club Drive and I've been a member... Denise England, and I live on Country Club Drive and I've been a member of this committee since its inception and I was one of the main people that pushed for this committee. I guess I just want to ask you to consider your cost of a child being killed by a deer over what it's going to cost the city to possibly, you know, the concerns. I understand your concerns and I agree with your concerns and I don't want to stress police and I don't think any of us do, but I've been in that house for 28 years. We always had two or three deer and it was always really cool to watch them. So, and this problem is not as intense in the entire city limits of Pocatello. It's, it's, so I don't think you're looking at the whole city is going to be, be adding to your, to the duties of the police officers and all of that and any other organization. No, there are some really heavy, heavy specific areas of Pocatello that are in, undated with huge deer populations. And in fact, now I had 19 in my front yard, 19 grazing. My neighbor, they can't get in my backyard because I have a solid fence and deer will tend not to jump anything they can't see through. I've learned a lot of stuff being on this committee. But anyway, my neighbor has a chain link fence and for two years in a row, she's had twins born in there and the twins stay there and now as adolescents, they come back and they live there. Her yard is paved with feces, paved, along with, well, that's a neighbor of mine, hers is also, she had, she's had her, her gates broken several times that her husband's had to repair. But I think what we're looking at, oh, let me add this, my husband was going around the corner at 10 miles an hour, a deer charged across the road, not doing it during running season, smashed into his door, broke the window, cost us $3,000 to get the car fixed. That was before it was even worse than it is at this point. And for 28 years, we've all lived up there comfortably with wildlife and we've never complained, we've never had an issue. But when you go from three or four to 19, my neighbor behind me had 35, and when they live and graze, and now there's bucks, and I occasionally will help my neighbor out by letting her dog out, I have to tell you, I'm very leery of going in her backyard and confronting a buck. I did the other day to get pictures of him, so I would have that. And the other thing is Indian Hills School is right there. I have a picture of a dead deer, deer right on the corner. My daughter-in-law teaches at Indian Hills. She walks from her house on Ness Purse to the school and she has had to veer her direction of getting there because of deer that would follow her. And my husband's a walker, you know, so I'm not the only person with these kinds of concerns. But, you know, I guess I also want the population of the city to understand, this isn't this series of an issue everywhere in the city, but man, is it concentrated. And now, you know, and I used to be concerned about the damage to my property. My big concern now is my personal safety, because driving down Manic Highway is horrid. And also I've learned the damage it does to the deer, we're killing them by feeding them. And I had a woman up the street walk down and tell me, she's named Hers Gracey.
So, so I'm gonna stop your comments right there.
Thank you.
Because I thought it was a pertinent comment that would help us with this and it was, it was good, but a lot of personal stuff as well. So thank you very much for that, but...
Well, it is in terms, it is pertinent in terms of, you're waiting for an accident to happen, you're waiting for a child to be killed because we had a dog stomped to death.
So, yeah. Yes, Heidi.
I think it's important for us to remember that a feeding ordinance might help a little bit, but it's not going to eradicate chronic wasting disease. It's not going to eliminate all feces in your neighbor's yard. It's not going to eliminate every possible interaction between a deer and a car. It's not going to solve all of our problems. So I think when we're, the one thing we do know is that there's probably a cost associated with it, which we'll find out. And I know you've said earlier, well, the council is mostly in support of it. I'm not opposed to giving a tool to the fishing game, but I really am very concerned about the added burden and the added cost to the city. And it's not because I don't value safety of children, it's not because I, you know what I mean? It has nothing to do with that. But I do think we've probably made a difference too. I mean, we got some press coverage on the proposed ordinance last time. And so like you said, you know, once you learn that an ordinance was considered for cell phones, that made you change. We've probably had some people that hopefully have changed already, which is a step in the right direction.
So I'd like to say something real quick. So, I mean, the basis of what they're asking is minimal, but if you've noticed, it's open Pandora's box and we've gone to who, what, where, why, where. That's what I'm concerned about. That's, that's where the cost is going to come is in manpower. And if, and if it's just going out and issuing citations, it's a, it's a cost of manpower. But if we do open Pandora's box like we're explaining, if that's what happens, that's where, that's where, that's where your extra is going to come from. That's what I'm concerned about.
And what I'm saying is that this ordinance is limited. And we haven't opened Pandora's box because we have not expanded the task of this group. We have not expanded the task of our animal control. We are simply addressing the issue of feeding wildlife and trying to diminish to a degree the human wildlife interactions.
Okay.
And that's all we are talking about here.
I get that.
And we're not bringing anything else into this.
Okay, I get that. But that's when, so when we start doing that, the question's going to be, because we serve the city of Pocatello, when people start coming and complaining that, okay, now I, I have more incidents of deers doing something else, do we tell them, we're only issuing, we're only issuing warnings on the feeding? We can go out and do this now. Now you have to contact fishing game. That, we're gonna, we're gonna field a lot more phone calls and, and again, that's where the matter goes. That's, that's what I'm talking about. We are going to get more calls.
You told us you were already fielding all kinds of calls. They're fielding those kinds of calls. We have not done anything proactive to inhibit the number of those calls coming in. So we're taking a proactive stance to inhibit this interaction. If we are successful, which is projected, then there will be a diminishing of those calls. That's, that's the purpose of ordinances. We have a phone ordinance that we just passed because we were having too many people driving cars irresponsibly. And, and we are enforcing that ordinance because it's a proactive way of diminishing that type of thing. All of the ordinances we have are in place to diminish, not enhance, charging people with crimes and defying crimes. That's not the task of our ordinances, go out and dig up new stuff. Our task is to diminish and make a crime and to make people more self-responsible.
Okay, so with that, with that, we've spent an hour and 20 minutes on this. I think it's clear as mud that it's, there's still a lot of questions that need to be answered and stuff. I apologize for cutting you off, Denise.
That's okay.
I just, we've got to get this meeting back together.
You know, because I'm on you.
And so, that's right, that's exactly right. So fishing game, if you can get us those, those calls and those estimated costs and stuff, it would be very helpful. If you guys can do the same thing with our animal control, we will set a time where we have you back to come in at a city, what is that meeting called? City Council Liaison Study Session Question Air? I can't remember what we called it anymore. It's a big, long thing that we can get some information on it so that we can, we can move forward. But I want it sooner than later, I really don't want to belabor this for another year so that we can be back here in a year. We want to do it in the next couple of months would be great.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Okay, with that, council, we will go ahead and move to agenda item four, which is two-factor authentication, TFA implementation, information technology, information technology, IT staffing, staff is seeking council's guidance on implementation of the two-factor authentication, TFA on the city's networks. IT staff is requesting contingency funds to be used for this project. Losing my counsel here.
That's okay. Give me two seconds because I need to make sure everything's going to continue to work after that long of a, having everything disconnected.
I'm gonna walk around now when we do these things, I guess. Okay.
Okay, good afternoon, council. Chris Sorensen, CIO for the city. I'm hoping this all works. Microsoft tried to push a rather large update to my tablet this morning and had me locked out for a while. I think I've got it all up and running. So multi-factor authentication is something we brought to you during the budget hearing processes. It did not make the final cut, however, as we continue to worry about cybersecurity and increasing the defense in depth and adding layers to our defense, it's a critical tool that we need to reconsider and look at implementing across the city. So today we're going to talk about what MFA is exactly. Again, MFA is multi-factor authentication. Sometimes it's referred to as TFA, two-factor authentication. It just depends on, on the language you see out there in the documentation of the subject. We're going to talk about what it is, why we should have MFA implemented, how we propose to implement it here in the city, who needs it in the city and where do we go from here? So to begin with, I want to share a short training video with you that we shared with, required all the city employees to take recently. It's about a four-minute video, but it really provides all the background as to what MFA is and why it's so critical in today's world.
What stands between cyber criminals and your online accounts? Your passwords and not much else? The stronger the password, the harder it is to crack, the safer your accounts. But what happens when a major data breach occurs and your login credentials get stolen? In that situation, even strong passwords can't protect you. The good news is that there is a more secure way to protect your online accounts. Multi-factor authentication. With multi-factor authentication, you remain in control. Multi-factor authentication, or MFA, adds an extra step to your basic login procedure. It combines something you know, your login credentials, with something you have, a device or bank card, or something you are, biometrics such as fingerprints. The most common form of MFA is SMS or text-based authentication. When you log into an account from an unknown device, the account generates a one-time password and sends it via text or voice message. This is an example of trusted device authentication. Unfortunately, cyber criminals have the ability to intercept SMS, rendering this method less effective than other MFA options. Recognizing that threat, some online accounts offer alternatives, such as push notifications, which prompt the user via their smartphone to verify the login attempt. Similarly, some accounts use authenticator apps, third-party software that generates time-based passwords. In both cases, the person attempting to access the account also needs access to the smart device. Other versions of MFA require a physical token. For example, when visiting an ATM, swiping your bank card and then entering your PIN qualifies as a two-factor process. Your PIN is something you know, while your bank card is something you have. USB tokens generate one-time passcodes only when plugged in. Without physically possessing the token, it is nearly impossible for a cyber criminal to gain unauthorized access. MFA can also include something you are, known as biometric authentication. Fingerprints, retina scans, and facial recognition are all examples of biometric authentication. Whether via security tokens, biometrics, or trusted devices, MFA helps protect you by adding an additional layer of security. There's no excuse for weak passwords, of course, but even the strongest passwords remain vulnerable to data breaches and other cyber attacks. Take the next step in security and implement multi-factor authentication wherever possible.
Okay, so that video gives you an idea about what we're talking about when it comes to MFA. Again, just a refresher, it's just that extra security step to be added to your username and password. It requires something you know, something you have, or something you are. We know that usernames and passwords are not enough. They're easily hacked, they're constantly changing the standards and the requirements for passwords. We recently increased the requirement here in the city from eight characters to 11 characters. We strongly recommend people go as many as 14 characters in those passwords. But even then, as the video mentioned, if there is a data breach and your data is captured in that, that will usually include your username and your password. For example, I have recently been a victim of a extortion campaign that's been going on nationwide, where I frequently get an email from some obscure person and in the subject line is an old password of mine. And it's clearly one of my passwords. It's one that I used to use a long time ago. And in, in this extortion scheme is, we've got video of you watching porn on your computer. We're going to send it to all your contacts list as evidence of that, here's your password. Please get hold of us and send us $600,000. It's, it's, it's a nationwide scheme. I know it, it's a scam because, one, I'm not looking at porn online and most of my computers don't have a video camera that they could capture me with, but they do have my password from, from an old data breach. Now, we, as part of our NOBE4 vendor that provides all of our security training, every quarter, they go out into the dark web and they look for incidents that might indicate that individuals here in the city have had their login credentials stolen. And the last report that we got, it had data from breaches that go back clear to 2012 through 2019. Those that were found to be very high risk, these are reachable or at a very high risk of social engineering. There were 213 individuals on the list that were, worked or have worked here in the city, 711 different email accounts. Of those 25 total identities were found on the dark web and there were 49 different breaches that they found evidence in that some of this data was captured.
How many identities did you say?
What's that?
How many identities?
Uh, 25 total identities.
Okay. So Chris, do we let employees know that...
No, because it's confusing and we're not sure the data is 100% correct. We don't want to over-share information that isn't totally understandable by the individuals.
So they're on our watch list, so to speak?
Yeah.
But they don't know it?
Sort of. It's just high-risk with the number of names that we have and the questions that it could raise. A lot of these, again, are old data breaches. Some of those total identities, we know are individuals that no longer work here. So those account names and passwords would not be valid anyway, should somebody take advantage of them. There's another category of high-risk, these are subject to high-risk or social engineering. They don't have the full identities, they don't have usernames and passwords, but there's enough information out there that somebody could make a targeted social engineering attack against the person. There's 498 individuals that are at risk for this. It's just where personal data was found in various breaches that are out there. Those that are medium risk, where they found some information in public spaces that were only 22, that were in that lower category. It's just kind of evidence of the risks that you run with using only usernames and passwords. It also illustrates the risk of not frequently changing those passwords and/or using the same password over and over on various accounts. So how do we propose to implement MFA? We evaluated two of the top vendors in the nation. One is a company called Dual. Another one is called Centrify and it's their adaptive product that they have. Both of these systems were evaluated by the IT staff. As we narrowed in on adaptive for various reasons, we... in on adaptive for various reasons, we expanded our test bed to individuals in the mayor's office, planning and development, HR, and out at the airport. Dual won out on ease of implementation. However, adaptive clearly won out in pricing, flexibility, user experience, and customer service. Dual's quote came in at $41,580 per year for 550 users, whereas adaptive's quote came in at $7,576 for a one-time setup, and then an annual maintenance of $5,592 for annual maintenance, for a total startup cost of $13,168 in the first year. It also includes 600 users versus the 550 that Dual quoted us. I'd like to run you through just a real quick demo of how it works and what the user would experience. Bear with me, because it requires me rebooting my computer here, and again, hopefully, Microsoft hasn't hijacked me.
So, Chris, as you're doing that...
Actually, they are going to hijack me, so I'm not going to...
How many users do we have?
Computer users?
Yeah.
There's about 480 individuals in the city that actually utilize the network. That goes up a little bit seasonally, as we bring on our seasonal staff in the summertime.
So is 550 or 600 enough?
It is. For example, our KnowBefore license takes us to 501. When we did our security training last month, there were 485, plus or minus one or two, because we're gaining and losing every day on the network.
If we reach that 551 mark or 601 mark?
Most of these companies are very flexible, and they don't hold you tight to those numbers. For example, KnowBefore knows that we go up and down, and they've never... Their rule pretty much is 10%. As long as we're within 10%, they're happy, and they're never going to come back at us. The KnowBefore account, we actually raised up to 501 recently, because at 480, the price per user, when you went over 500 to 501, the price per user dropped, where it actually brought our overall cost to go up. We were paying for 480 users. So, we chose to go up in that case. So again, I wanted to show you a demo, but if I reboot my computer, unfortunately, Microsoft is going to hijack it and continue an update that we don't want to do. So what happens for a user, to kind of walk you through it, is a user will still log on with their username and password, just like they do today. It will then go to our authentication server, and it will come back to the individual with several options. One of the options is for it to send that one-time passcode to your, a push to your phone, where you would have an app. And as soon as you get the push, you just click approve, and it will log you into the system. Another option is for it to send you that SMS text message, where it would send you like a six-digit PIN that you would then type into the system. Another option that we use frequently with it is security questions. You have some preset-up security questions in the system, so the authentic comes back to you and picks one of your questions, and you have to answer that question. Another option is for it to actually call you on the phone and tell you that you're trying to log in, and at that point, you will enter a PIN into your phone, a pre-designated PIN. It will also work with a desk phone. So you have all these different options that we would bring with this multi-factor authentication tool that we're talking about. Okay? So we would apply it to all users on our network, those that have email access would have to do this. Our system administrators, who have special high-level accounts, would also have it made available to them. It simplifies a lot of the processes for our system administrators by doing this. Down the road, we will also expand it to Outlook web access, as well as our virtual private network that we have set up. Just a side note, everyone should consider implementing MFA for your personal use. We recommend that, as we've done our training across the city and as we talk to people, when you're given that option, when your bank gives you an option to use MFA, again, outside of the scope of the city, but we just try to encourage people to always be safe, no matter where they're at. Take advantage of those options. Use multi-factor authentication when logging into your email accounts, your bank accounts, or anywhere else you might be sharing data you don't want lost to somebody else. So at this point, we in IT are ready to recommend that we move forward with an adaptive solution. I have contingency funds in my budget that would cover that first-year cost. The annual maintenance would have to be added to future budgets. Or we could do a budget amendment. We're about ready to do a budget amendment. Want to understand our first budget amendment for the fiscal year, and we could pull these funds out of our reserve funds that we have available. So, questions?
Are the two systems you explored comparable, Chris?
Ask that again.
The two vendors that you...
The two vendors, Dual and Adaptive. Security-wise, yes. The biggest problem we had with Dual was every time that your screen went into screen lock, with 15 minutes of inactivity, or for those that have a Bluetooth connection where you walk away with your phone and it locks, every time that it would do a screen lock like that, you would have to do the two-factor authentication. Initially, when we tested adaptive, they had that problem solved for Apple, but they did not have it solved for the Android and the Microsoft side. They went back and actually re-engineered that piece for us at our request, and we now have a four-hour timeout on that. So, once you log in with two-factor authentication, you're not going to have to do that again for four hours every time your screen locks or everything, so at most twice a day. We've also found that that four-hour resets every time you actually reboot your system. So for example, us in IT, yesterday was the first time I actually had to, was forced by the system to do a TFA in the daytime, because I'm always rebooting my system as we're testing and evaluating things. But I was away from my office for about four hours yesterday, and when I came out back, it actually had gone through that four-hour timeout.
Is adaptive four hours as well?
Adaptive is the one I'm talking about. Dual does not have that capability. Dual will force you every time your screen locks.
I thought you said they had changed it. I'm sorry.
You will have to do it. We're working with a team out of Salt Lake. They have been really helpful for us. Because we actually worked with them and helped resolve the four-hour timeout, their quote came back a little bit less. They've been really receptive to us and helpful. We've contacted several cities and other organizations that have used adaptive. They're pleased with the support, the implementation, and the change management process. Those that tested it in IT, those that tested it throughout the city, have all responded back to me that they did not find any negative reasons to not do this. It may take as much as five to 15 seconds longer in your login process, but it's nothing overly complicated. If it's designed right, for example, it's on my tablet. You have to put it on the machines themselves. There's an agent that goes on there. I was speaking up at Farm Bureau yesterday at their luncheon. I had my machine up there. Because my computer wasn't able to talk back to our server, it still sends a code to my phone, and I was able to type in the code onto my tablet and still use TFA, even though I wasn't attached to the city's network at the time.
Do all our employees have phones that they can use for that?
No, they don't. And that's why there's those other options, such as calling your desk phone, answering security questions, preset PINs as additions. Anybody that has a smartphone, the app will work on. The app is a free app. It uses minimal data. We would encourage individuals to put that app and use it on their phone. It's really the most secure method, when it pushes the code to your phone and you just hit accept. One, it's fast. Two, it's the most secure. And we would encourage those that have smartphones, even though they're not city phones, to still utilize their phones. We can't force them to, but we would strongly encourage them. We don't find any detrimental reason why they wouldn't want to do that.
Are the phones themselves a risk?
No. Not when it comes to the login. There is, unlike the SMS text message, like the video said, you can get a man-in-the-middle attack, where they pretend to be you, and they capture the code without you knowing they captured the code, or they spoof your phone number and get the code sent to you. Even the FBI has had some notifications in the last couple of months of the risk that that SMS text messaging for two-factor authentication has. However, while there's still those risks, everybody still continues to recommend that you go to some form of multi-factor authentication, realizing it's not a silver bullet. It's not perfect. It's not 100% guaranteed. But like we tell everybody, when it comes to cybersecurity, there is no 100% guarantee. Nobody can guarantee that a bad guy's not going to get to you. That's why every week, Microsoft sends you updates. That's why my computer wants to do an update, because more bad guys down, more bad things out there, easy ways to get in, and they're just trying to fix it. So we're just asking to be able to go forward and to apply this extra layer of defense into our networks.
And the adaptive was considerably less, if I remember.
It's about 1/8 of the cost annually.
I would say go ahead and bring it forward. If you can do it within your budget this year, I think that's a better way to do it.
I would think I could use my contingency funds easily for it, and then if something else comes up that I need additional funds for, at that point, time will come back and after.
That's my position.
But I do have the funds to do the full first-year implementation.
So I'm kind of surprised to hear you say that, because you voted against the budget every year and say it's too high, but this didn't even make the cut in our budget this year. So this is...
It was close.
Yeah, well, but it's using money, and we're also having to commit for future maintenance, so it's not like it's a one-time and done.
How much are we talking, Chris?
About $5,000 a year.
Yeah, $5,000 a year.
Which really, in the scope of the overall city budget, isn't anything, you know, it is, but it is small. Within my budget, it's still not.
I would feel better if we could address this again in our next budget cycle than making a decision on it right now.
That's fine. Every time we delay anything when it comes to cybersecurity, if something happens, you're at risk of public exposure and public comment, and we all know what happened just a couple of months ago. Would this have fixed a couple of months ago? Probably not, based on what we know about the breach that happened a couple of months ago. But again, as you add layers of defense in your process, it protects you.
People on their cards had this layer, they couldn't have been breached as easy.
In the incident that we had within the city, this would not, that would not have stopped what happened with the city breach.
I mean, if they're using their card, I've got some cards that I have to put in the number room, too.
Yeah, but that breach had nothing to do with our...
Yeah, that breach would not have...
I'm saying individuals had it where they had to verify the use of their card.
All I'm saying is, in the eyes of public opinion, every step that we can take to improve our security is going to make it look like we're doing our job a little bit better.
Rick, what do you think? You want to...
Flip back to the cost page, could you, Chris?
Yes.
I wrote down, the one was $41,580, the other was $13,168.
The $13,000 was the one-time cost, the annual cost is just over $5,000.
And so is the 41, was the one-time.
So it's 13,168, the whole thing?
That's the first-year startup cost, and then annually after that, it would be the $5,592.
And this money is already, there is funds in your budget currently?
I have contingency funds for projects that come after the budget cycle that we deem important enough that we think we ought to use the money for. That is there. And so yes, we have it. Normally, I would be able to spend that, because it's already authorized in my budget to spend it, but because I'm committing as to a future-year expense, I'm coming to you to ensure that I'll have the addition of $5,600 a year.
So today's discussion isn't whether or not you can pay for it today, it's whether or not you can pay for it tomorrow, because you've got to add it to the budget next year.
I just don't want to spend the $13,000 startup cost to it right now, and then not be able to get it added into my budget for the next fiscal year and then have to drop the project over.
Sure, sure.
Well, we know what happened to Blackfoot. They had a real problem with ransomware. These things can have huge impacts citywide. It could shut us down. I kind of agree with Heidi's comment, though, but I think it's something that we got to move forward on.
Well, one thing I will comment is if there's one person who takes cybersecurity very seriously, it's Chris Sorensen. So, I mean, he's always going to be bringing us all different ideas for it. And I mean, I think they're good, and I'm glad he's bringing those before us, but we could just keep signing up for them forever. And I think we have to, at some point, realize when we're incurring extra costs, too. This wouldn't have made a difference on the recent breach that we had. I mean, it's good, but he just pointed out, too, it's not a silver bullet. It's not going to protect us from every possible thing that could ever happen.
The recent shell of a bullet.
Or no. But we're laying us at Blackfoot, but what I'm trying to say is, he's got a much tighter, you know, control on things than probably that they did.
Every time, you know, you come up with these solutions, we just keep breeding better and better hackers.
I was going to say, to your point about we could do this forever, we will be doing this forever, because technology's changing and hackers are getting smarter and everything. So it is an ongoing thing. So, I mean, I understand your concern.
I have a whole list of things in the queue that I would like to add, but this is the next one there.
This is what you see as the most important next step.
At this time. A couple of years ago, it was training, and we were spending the money on the training. But now that we've got the training, you have to go to the next step.
But this is going to constantly change. I mean, like what you say is the next step is going to be constantly changing. I'm concerned that we had a discussion about this in the budget, and we made a decision and everything, but things change constantly with technology, and the threat changes constantly. So I'm kind of leaning with you that we have to bite this bullet.
Jim, your opinion here?
I'm inclined to move forward right now, because if we put it off, I think the cost will increase.
Is there any value in our meeting, when we discussed the thing, to have more of a discussion, or are we interested in just moving it to the agenda to move forward with this? Is there, I mean, is there value in having more discussion on it? Not necessarily right now.
I still feel that it's very important for us to evaluate. I mean, we've got good ideas coming from the IT department. We've got good ideas coming from many of our other departments. I think it's important for us to have a look at it all together during our budget process, so we can weigh the pros and cons of each and make a decision. So I would hate to see us move forward with committing something right now and then, come budget season, wish that we had made a different decision. So I'm still standing by that I think it would be better to evaluate it during the budget process.
Okay.
I think we ought to do it now. I think that cybersecurity is a huge issue. I think that compared to other things, we spend $5,592 annual as minimal. And we're protecting, I see this, if we get 500 people covered, it comes out about $26 per person, which is the cost of doing business as a city, I think.
So is there any, is there some more information that we can have Chris bring us, and at least have the, why don't we have this discussion next week, when we're, so we can think about it for, is it next week when we do that meeting?
Yes.
21st or the 21st? Let's have a discussion, and he can move forward and bring it after that meeting if we decide that that's something that we need to. But let's think about it for a week and have a discussion, and then we'll go from there. Okay?
So you'll come back to me with guidance?
Yeah. We'll be looking, if we move forward with it, we'll be looking at the December, whatever, 5 meeting probably, opposed to the next one, or, you know, one of the December meetings, if that's where we fall on it. Okay? Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thank you.
Gen item 5, then we'll move on to Gen Item 5. Proposed amendments to City Electrical Code 15.08.050. Building Department staff will present information to on proposed amendments to the City Pocatello Electrical Code 15.08.050.
Good morning, Councilman Mayor. Richard Bigelow, building official for the City of Pocatello. We're coming for you today to make two changes to our electrical ordinance. The first one is for changing the exemption for multifamily use up to fourplexes. They're most common apartment that gets built in the city, and under the current ordinance, anything commercially built requires it to be built in conduit or raceways, which is an added cost to our contractors. We have a meeting tonight with the builders to discuss fire sprinklers that per state statute has to be taking place in these buildings. So currently, we're not enforcing that part of our ordinance, because they consider it residential, but moving forward as of January 1, which we were proposing... residential, but moving forward as of January 1, which we were proposing for this fire sprinkle thing, this is going to add an added expense to the builders, which will be pushed on to the citizens, how these homes for this conduit and raceway.
You will have police protection here with you tonight?
I don't think so, actually. Have you seen him?
I got beat up yesterday by some of the legislatures up in Idaho Falls that are luncheon on building codes, so, but some of our builders I talked to, but in the same token, they realize it's state statute and our hands are tied, so we have to follow state laws. It's not, if it was, if it was a city ordinance, then we would be up here talking about making those changes in the city, but we're a state statute. So we're trying to be proactive, realizing that with that change, the way our city ordinance is currently written, it was going to be an added cost, and one of the estimates from the builders came back is about $5,000 a unit to wire these units in conduit or raceways.
$20,000 for a fourplex?
Yes, which is an existential increase on that, and we're already bound by state statute on fire sprinkler cost, you know, we'd hate to see a cost of a building go up by $40,000 or more. So that's why we're before you today on this first part, to amend our ordinance to allow fourplexes to be exempt from being wired in conduit or raceway.
Is that presented a safety issue?
No, so the National Electrical Code does not require these buildings to be wired this way. It was just something that was brought to my attention after working here that was already in our ordinance, so.
So a city ordinance, it isn't a state code?
It's not, no, and we're just becoming a little more compliant with other agencies' jurisdictions in the area, because they don't, the state of Idaho doesn't require this action to happen. Idaho Falls, you know, any of the other bigger cities around us, they don't, they don't require this. It's just something that was in our ordinance, that was brought to my attention.
And the main purpose, just to clarify, is so that our building costs are not prohibitive?
Correct.
That they won't skyrocket?
Yeah, because unfortunately, you know, the way it's written now, we have to enforce that.
Do we have any concerns with changing this, Jared?
Not from a legal perspective, no.
Makes sense to me.
My only question would be safety, but you say it's not.
No, I've talked to our electrical inspector tremendously about this, and, you know, he was in agreements. He didn't want to see us go higher than a fourplex, you know, because it also...
Why?
Just because of the size of the project, just, because we could have, the way the ordinance was written, it was an R2 application, which is an occupancy classification of a building, which include motels and dormitories and stuff like that, so, which we don't get massive, large structures like that built here currently, so our main, since I've been here, our main push has been fourplexes.
If we give this exemption, I mean, from a legal standpoint, are there going to be people building other size, either smaller or bigger, that are going to say it's unfair? That they have to comply, but fourplexes don't?
So anything smaller than a fourplex will not, so anything bigger than a fourplex, up to...
Would that be a concern? I mean, if somebody does come along and build something bigger?
It's possible.
That they say that this is unfair?
I think there's a reasonable basis for capping it at a fourplex, capping the exemption at a fourplex. Like I said, the bigger you get, the more electricity you have to get to further ends of the unit, the complex itself is just bigger and requires more, right words, amperage, voltage, and therefore, that conduit is more necessary at that point, but a fourplex level and less, if there's a reasonable basis for the ordinance.
Okay, Heidi?
Is that in conformity with the National Electrical Code also? Do they require for over fourplexes for it to be in the, yeah, or do they allow the temporary on that?
It depends on the type of construction that they do. So, you know, most commercial work is steel studs, and everything is ran in the raceways and conduit and stuff like that. You get into building heights, and then the type of construction changes. So fourplexes is built out of wood and where they can run their RoMEX, and duplexes, you know, which is their current practice, which meets the current electrical code requirements.
But I guess I'm just asking, is there an argument to expand it, though, a little bit, for, you know, if somebody's building a eight-unit apartment building or something like that, and it's not a big commercial steel, you know, I mean, should we consider it in that situation?
It is a possibility. You know, we haven't really seen very many of those since...
But we might with our new...
We're possibly, it is possible. But where do you put the cap on it? Do, I mean, we just...
Is there, in the national code, is there, where is their threshold? Do they not have one?
Nothing that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So they, the national code then requires raceways or conduits?
They do on, like, so, like, commercial for, like, when they do steel studs, that's ran through conduit and raceway. You know, hospitals, the temple, that's all going to be done in conduit and raceway. We're mainly looking at a, you know, wood, 5B construction, wood construction application for this.
We've heard that there's going to be a major apartment complex going north of town, 380-some units. Would this apply to that construction?
No, it would be...
They would still be required to have?
They would still be required to do the raceway.
Should they?
It's, it's up to you.
No, it's up, you're the building guy.
But nationally, they would not be required to.
In the electrical code, depending on, I don't know how they're going to build the building yet.
Okay.
It, I don't know if they're going to build it out of wood or if they're going to build it out of steel. I haven't seen any plans, but if it was to be built out of wood, yes, it would affect them. It would be an added cost.
Above and beyond what the national code would require?
Correct.
Why don't we just adopt the national code?
Well, we have, but this is an ordinance that's already on our books. It's already in place.
So I guess the question is, I mean, I'm in favor of us not being prohibitive to things unless there's a super good reason for it, I mean, if...
Multi-fam, from fourplexes to multi-family units?
Why don't we just repeal it? And just adopt the national code?
We already, we already have the national code, it's just this, this ordinance.
We have the national code as our backdrop, but we have been more aggressive in this area. Is that right?
What's that? Sorry.
We have the national code as our backdrop, but we've been more aggressive because we...
Correct, we're...
We can go a little bit further.
We can, we can, we can't be less restrictive, we can be more restrictive, and this is a more restrictive ordinance that's been on the books.
And what would the rationale have been for passing that?
I have no idea.
Originally? Yeah, I couldn't speak to that.
Can we find out?
I feel like if we don't know what the really good reason was for having it more restrictive, why are we trying to make it more difficult for people?
When was this ordinance that we're talking about?
I'm not sure when it came into effect.
It seems to me like the less regulation on this is probably going to be beneficial. Although, when you are building with metal, metal frames, then it's obvious, but that's already covered that you have to put it in conduits.
So, under the current ordinance, there's an exception. Buildings designed under the International Building Code classified as Group R3 and R4 occupancies.
What is R3 and R4?
Those are, I should have brought my codebook, I apologize. They're just like boarding houses, stuff like that. R2, we wanted to add R2, which would cover the apartment complexes, but it also covers motels, hotels, dormitories, stuff like that. So we could, under the exemption, just add R2 instead of fourplex, and that way, we'd cover the North Gate apartment complex, that major one up there. There was also one for 186 units, talked about over by the college, for a proposed site where the old hospital was, and, you know.
Depending on the type of construction.
Correct.
Well, I'm just thinking about how, I mean, we, few of us were just at the ribbon-cutting for housing and their new units that they had, and we heard the comment again, how housing is in short supply, and so I'm just thinking, if that's the case and we know we have an issue, you know, why we would want to make it more difficult for people to be able to bring some of that more affordable apartment-style housing in. I mean, I know it hasn't been historically what's usually in Pocatello, but if that could be a benefit to the community, I'm just thinking that might be good.
I'm wondering, based on Councilwoman Adamson's questions, like, you're the expert, what would your recommendation be?
Well, listening to the council, the reason why we recommended fourplexes, because normally that's the most common structure that we see built here in the city so far.
But would you see any issue if we were to say we're going to repeal this?
If we were to amend it, where, you know, multi-family structures, in this exemption, add R2 to it for the occupancy classification, I wouldn't lose any sleep over that, and that would allow those apartment complexes to move forward.
Is there any downside? I mean, what's the, would you have any concern?
No, because they still have to comply with the National Electrical Code. So this is just a city ordinance that was just more restrictive at the time, and our electrical inspector was talking to him, was comfortable going up to fourplexes, since that's what we normally see built, so.
Would he be comfortable, do you think, with...
I think he'd be fine, because they'd still have to meet the National Electrical Code standards, which is adopted by the state and by the city.
So what could have been the rationale for being more stringent? Could it have been protect fire, is there, are there some other attributes of our city versus others that...
No, because they all have to conform to the same code standards throughout the state.
Stimpy growth, probably, to slow growth down of some sort. Did you see when the, does it even say when that was adopted?
Just a brief review of that section of the ordinance. It's had numerous adoption dates and updates throughout the years, the most recent being 2017, as far back as 2005, so I couldn't speak for sure as to when this particular exemption that limited to twoplexes and threeplexes, duplexes and threeplexes was adopted.
So that ordinance was the whole ordinance that we did, not the revision of this, or we didn't specifically call this out in the past?
Not that I can, not that I can pull up right here, because some further research, we could probably find when this particular section of the ordinance was adopted or amended, but I don't have that with me today.
I don't think it matters that much, I was just curious.
Just to let you know, we're asking to be more lenient, because we're already more restrictive, so, I mean, either, either whatever you guys decide, if you decide to just go up to fourplexes, or if we wanted to make it so that all multi-family homes don't have to comply with this, as long as it complies with the National Electrical Code, is a win for our, I feel, for our area and our builders and our citizens.
But we're still complying with the national code.
Correct.
I think if we repealed the entire ordinance, I initially thought this ordinance was just on this, but it sounds like to repeal this entire ordinance is repealing all of the building things that we've adopted as a city that's over and above the national standard.
We should just change the language to not just fourplexes, but increase the, to multi-family.
Multi-family or R2 occupancy would be the cleanest way to do it.
Because if we repeal it, it includes other things.
But why do we need more than what the National Electrical Code is? That's one of the issues the state's having right now with contractors working across multiple jurisdictions, not knowing what the code is in a particular neighborhood or community.
Well, we have a problem between here and Chubbe.
Yeah, well, and there's a big issue in the Teton Valley over this exact thing, the adoption of individual differences in codes. Why don't we just go with the National Electrical Code and call it good?
Can we know a little bit more about what other things we would be changing if we did that?
So, if I'm understanding correctly, you're wanting to get rid of the 15.08.050 completely?
And anything else we can, we're causing problems with development.
What else does that code include that we'd be getting rid of?
It talks about a lot of other stuff. There's all the way up to the letter I under it. One other part that's in this code was, the second item on this was amendment is for, it talks about all services must be a minimum of two-inch conduit, service mass that are permanent to a roof must be a minimum of two-inch metal conduit, and we wanted to add the word "permanent" to it, so that, because currently Idaho Power has their regulations saying that all permanent power has to be done in two-inch conduits. Well, for the contractors, when they make their temporary power pulse, it also has to be a two-inch. So by adding the word "permanent," it allows them to use smaller conduit, saves them a little bit of money for the temporary power, because then it doesn't have to comply with Idaho Power standards, since it's not a permanent conduit. But it, but it also talks about other things through here. Electrical contractor shall be required to install smoke detector, carbon and oxide detectors, and alarms in accordance with the International Residential Building Code, which is part of our other code. So some of this stuff is redundant through it. I haven't looked at all of it. These were just the two main topics that my electrical inspector brought to me.
Heidi?
So every time we, you know, update the code, there's a cost incurred and that type of thing, so is it better for us to say, okay, let's move forward with the electrical part that you've brought before us, and we can look at some of that other redundant or unnecessary or overly restrictive, in your opinion? I mean, we obviously are very concerned about safety, and we would rely on you as our building official to tell us if that was going to be a problem, but we want to go by the national safety codes and what you think is appropriate, but we don't want to be overly restrictive if nobody can think of a good reason why we are, right? So is it better to say, let's do a full review of that and see if there's anything else before we move forward, or is it better to just move forward with this and then do the full review later?
As far as the cost is concerned, the only real cost to this particular proposed ordinance would be the publication cost and the time that's into it in the meetings. But it sounds like the building contractors are on board with this, the electrical inspectors on board with this. I would suggest implementing these changes now and then having a review done of the full. I mean, it is, it is a fairly large section, but the section is just the additional provisions and exceptions to the National Electric Code, so looking at those other issues and deciding whether or not they need to be there. At some point in the past, some council decided that these exceptions and additional provisions needed to be part of our code, and like you said, we can add additional restrictions, but we can't be less lenient than the national code, so that could certainly be done.
So if that's the case, I would be prepared to make a motion for guidance. So I move that we instruct the staff to bring forward these proposed amendments, but to expand it to include all multi-family in the R2, like we've discussed, at a future meeting for us to vote on at that time.
I don't see anything wrong with the existing proposal, if that's the direction we're going to go, and can we not approve that at this point?
Well, it is approving it, it's just expanding to allow for a little bit more than a fourplex.
It's adding R2, did you say?
R2 occupancies, which is multi-family.
Which they were saying they don't see any reason why.
So it would cover any apartments that would be built over a fourplex throughout the whole city.
So a six-unit building or some, as long as it's not metal and has those others.
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
I don't see any reason to do this twice. If we're going to do this and then go back and reconsider it down the road, why not just wait and do it all at once?
Well, the reason why I'm thinking is because our legal department said they would recommend moving forward with that now, and also, this gets it to where people right now can start not having the extra requirements of electrical, and then it doesn't prolong it while we're waiting to review it. Who knows how long that's going to take? I mean, they have other stuff they've got to do. It's not like they're going to get right on it this afternoon, probably.
Each of those provisions will need to be looked at individually as they compare to the National Electrical Code, to make sure we're not eliminating a provision or an exception that we really wanted in there.
Let's not prolong this, you know?
And I'm good with your motion, but I just have a question about whether you would want to say anything more in your motion about, since it's a motion for guidance, about asking for that review to proceed, for the... about asking for that review to proceed, for the rest of it, so that we would be approving this part now, but we would ask you to go ahead and look at all the rest of it, too?
Do we need that as a formal motion?
We could just, I think we could just let him know, I think he knows that we want him to look at it deeper. I mean, if he doesn't, we probably ought to be looking for a different building inspector.
They're trying to do that.
It was pretty clear that we wanted a deeper dive into this.
So that doesn't need to be in the motion, but we want that.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm fine.
Okay, then we have a motion by Adamson and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Mayor and council, I probably should have done this before the vote, but I think it's probably implied, the motion included the second suggestion as well to add the word "permanent," is that correct?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We aren't looking for a new building inspector.
We will be reporting back to you.
But thank you for looking at this, too, and bringing this to us. I mean, it's good to have, you know, someone taking a look.
We're just trying to be proactive. We want to see building continue to grow in Pocatello. We want to see, we want builders to want to build here, and that's what we're trying to do. There's stuff that we have to follow by state statutes, which our hands are tied, but stuff like this, we can amend and make it easier for them.
Thank you.
Okay, super, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. With that, we are going to go ahead and have a break for a few minutes, and we'll be back for item seven.
How long is a break? Ten minutes?
Well, a few minutes, and you know what that means.
Did six get pulled in?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you for joining us after our break. We'll go ahead and continue on our study session agenda, agenda item number seven, surplus declaration and auction consideration for public works buildings. Public Works staff is seeking council's guidance regarding underutilized public works buildings due to merging the multiple departments into one facility. The survey annex located at 1428 North Third Avenue, the sanitation shop located at 1121 South Second Avenue, the street shop located at 1080 South First Avenue, are no longer utilized. Staff is requesting to have these properties declared as surplus property, and when appropriate, auctioned off in accordance with Idaho Code 50-1401, conveyance of property.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Jeff Mansfield, the Public Works Director. I'm joined today by Jared Johnston, the City Attorney, Tom Kirkman, the Deputy Public Works Director, and Jen Flynn, the Public Works Executive Assistant. I'd like to thank Jen for putting together this presentation and doing the council agenda requests, and taking care of a lot of the legwork behind this. So, thank you all for the little cards that we all have. All of our employees have them now and carry them with them, and we appreciate that. As I look through that, a couple of items come to mind under the mission statement. One of them talks about promoting a high quality of life through innovation, and then under our value statements, we talk about committing to creativity and embracing possibilities. And because of some of the efforts that we've put in to help try to consolidate staff and to help make the city more efficient by consolidating departments and creating a fleet department, because of that, we've got some properties that are currently being underutilized that we would like to represent to you for declaration as surplus, and then get your guidance on how you would like to go about disposing of or using this property. So as the mayor mentioned, the properties that we'll be discussing are the survey annex, the sanitation department, the street department, and we'd also like to talk to you about the value of each of those department, departments, and those properties, and then get guidance from you on how you would like us to proceed with those properties. So, according to Idaho Code 50-1401, this talks about the conveyance of municipal property. And essentially, the process that we need to follow is that we need to declare the property as surplus, and then once that is declared, then we need to set a minimum auction price for the property. There is a caveat in there that you can, you may also offer to sell without establishing a minimum price, but our recommendation is that we request that you guys set a minimum price for those properties. The next thing that would happen is we would publish a summary of action taken by the City Council and an intent to hold a public hearing. We would hold that public hearing 14 days after the publication, proceed with the sale of the other properties through the auction, and then the other question that we have is if those reserve minimums are not met, then what, how would the city like us to direct us, to direct us how to dispose of those properties in the case that those minimums are not met? So the first property we're going to talk about is the survey annex. This was a property that was utilized by the engineering department. We used to, the city used to have a pretty robust survey department. I think there were six or eight surveyors at the time, and they were all housed at this department. However, with the new technology and with the consolidation of the surveyors into engineering and kind of the sharing of tasks, we're currently with one surveyor, and so it doesn't make sense to have a building for one person. And so, back in, I believe, 2012, we vacated this building, and at that time, it just became utilized for storage, storage of survey equipment, stuff for science and environment. In fact, most recently, a lot of the records from legal and finance have been stored over in that building. However, we've recently, Jen, let it charge to completely clean it out. It's ready, ready to go, and so we did an appraisal on the building, I think it was back in 2013, and the building appraised for about $95,000. And then the idea kind of just died, and then we brought it up again, and in 2017, we had another appraisal done, and it praised it that time for about $83,000. Our opinion is, I mean, we're paying, we're not paying water or gas or anything on this building, but we are paying the electrical bill, and then there's the, obviously, the upkeep that you have to do with the yard and different things like that. And so, we feel like the longer we hang on to this building, the less it's going to be valued, and we feel like it's something that we would recommend that we go ahead and surplus and auction off. Okay? And we could talk about all of the buildings at the end. The next item is the sanitation department is located at 1121 South Second. In 2019, so, part of the consolidation of the street department and the sanitation department, and the development of the fleet department included us purchasing the building over on Garrett Way. And so the sanitation department, the street department were both moved over into that facility. And so since that time, we've slowly been phasing out of these buildings, and we're pretty much to the point where they're no longer being utilized. Are we still using the wash bay a little bit?
Yeah, we're still in the process of construction of the renovations of the wash bay over at the new facility. We're probably about 75% done, we should be done in a couple of weeks. And then, once that part's done, they're using, part of the building will be the weld bay as staging for the construction. So as soon as the wash bay portion is done, then the weld bay will be ready, and those are the two only things that we're operating out of the sanitation department right now, is washing the trucks and then welding on containers.
Thank you. So 2019, we had this property appraised, came in with an appraisal value of $510,000 for the office, the shop, and the north compound area. We've also had a company that is very interested in leasing this property from the building, or, excuse me, from the city. It's Metroquip. They are a manufacturer or supplier, dealer for street sweepers, and they're also looking into getting into garbage trucks and different things like that. And so they have some interest in it. They came over and met with us, and they have some interest in leasing it. They've got a few questions. They don't need a lot of the office space, and so they, they're, one of the questions that they have is whether or not they can sublease part of the office space or not, and that's something we kind of need to work through with legal, if that's an option you guys are interested in looking at.
Jeff, we have a question.
How long of a lease are they looking at?
Long term. I mean, if we needed to do like a 10-year lease, I'm sure that that would be something that they would probably be interested in.
And are they interested in purchasing it?
I'll let Jen talk to that one, because she spoke with them this morning.
Yeah, I just talked with them this morning, and they're more interested in leasing initially. So, no, they don't want to buy right now, unless the price is low enough, and I just told them that the price would be set by you guys initially, and then through the auction process. So if there's not a lot of competition, it might sell for a lower price, but if there's not many people, then it'll be higher.
Well, I have another question, but I don't know if I should ask it later, or if now is the time to ask it, but can we, if we do enter into a long-term lease, can we then still sell it? Because a lot of, like, investors would be interested in that if they knew they had a secured, is that a possibility, like legally? Can we do that? Or do we have to either sell it or lease it and commit to that?
We discussed that a little bit. I know one of the conversations I think we had originally is they were looking at their options, and maybe leasing for three years is an option to buy. We don't know if that's a feasible option, because it has to go to surplus, and so I don't know how we would use their lease to lower the purchase price three years later. Does that make sense? So there's, I think there's some legal issues that we run into.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, even if it's not them, if it's just another?
Not lease to buy, but?
Yeah, if it's a private individual that would buy that.
We'd still have to surplus it. Yeah, we'd still have to, because as we're leasing it, it's still our asset, and we would have to go through the same process when we decide to.
But can we surplus something that has an existing lease on it?
Well, if we wrote the lease that allowed us to get out of it for that purpose, then yes.
Then we could, okay.
But if the lease is guaranteed 10 years, as long as they pay their monthly payment, then, then no, we would be locked in for that 10-year lease.
Because I would really like to see it go back on the tax rolls and not continue to be, you know, owned by the city, so that's kind of why I was asking.
But there may be an investor who wants to buy the building, knowing they have somebody who will lease it long term, yeah. So, but it could be a good way for us to get out.
There is some benefit to the city that bringing this company in. Right now, anytime we want to, we need to take one of our sweepers to get serviced, we're having to haul them to Boise, and it would be nice to just have one down the street that we could utilize, that they would have the supplies in stock and be able to service our sweepers as needed. They, right now, they don't have anybody in this region, and so this region is underserved. Clear out to Rexburg, Idaho Falls, over into Wyoming, northern Utah, it's, they don't really have a location here, and so they're wanting to bring their business here and really start providing a service from this area. And so there is some benefit, that it would bring some added jobs to the area, but it's just an option that you guys can look at. So in the appraisal, they did list a suggested rent price, $4.21, $4.20 per square foot per year for the building, and $0.05 per square foot per year for the land, and then the anticipated income from that lease would be $51,132.83 per year. As a side note, included in that appraisal, I don't know if you read through that completely or not, the appraisal was also done on the south compound of this lot, and also the welding shop, and those properties are going to be retained for continued city use. So, we really don't have a recommendation on this one, whether to lease it or whether to surplus it, but we wanted to present that to you guys and let you make that decision.
How long do you think we need to retain the south compound and the welding shop?
So the south bound, or the south portion of that compound, the biggest anchor that's holding us there is, when that section was built, we vacated Humboldt Street to build that, and so if we were to sell that, we would lose any potential to open Humboldt. We'd lose that right-of-way, which, depending on how the Terry first works, I don't know what that looks like. And then on the southwest corner of that lot also, there is a water department well. So if we wanted to retain the right-of-way plus that well portion, it's going to end up being a pretty small parcel right there. What is, what we're looking at as a benefit for the sanitation department is, for like Johnny Creek or South Park, that'll be a staging area for roll-off containers. Our roll-off business is really picking up, and it's really a long jaunt to North Gate, to the landfill, and then if he's got to take that container somewhere else, we wanted it somewhere kind of in the middle of this stage. So there's kind of like three really good ideas for us to maintain it.
Plus the glass bunker.
Oh, yeah, and then the property where we've constructed the glass bunker was on the street department's property, and that's one of the properties we'll talk about next that we also want to sell, so we would relocate the glass bunker over there for our glass recycling program. That answer your question?
Welding shop. How soon do you anticipate that moving?
So the welding shop, we're hoping by the, probably the end of the month, we'll have that ready to go.
So you would continue to need it, that welding shop?
Correct.
So that welding shop would be utilized by other departments, that would be utilized by WPC. Currently, they don't have any place centralized in town to house their back truck and some of their emergency equipment, and so anytime there's an emergency south of town, they have to run clear out to the plant, and then run clear back to the other end of town, and it takes a lot of time, puts a lot of wear and tear on our equipment, and so having that as a central location where we can stage some of the WPC equipment is some real benefit to the city. In addition, so I mentioned that we have vacated the survey annex, and took out all of our survey storage, our vaults and different things like that, and then a lot of the science and environmental type stuff. And so over there at that weld shop, there's a little, there's a little kind of a quonset hut in the back there that would be utilized to store that equipment.
So it becomes just a storage shop, not a welding shop?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
It's got a small office in the back.
Can they not store it at the, at our public works annex? Is there not space for them to store there? Why does it have to be here?
For the WPC? Yeah, we're, believe it or not, we're kind of busting at the seams already a little bit.
Well, WPC's idea is, to the, WPC to Ross Park is a long ways, but if they have something there where they can have some equipment and stage things and stuff, it's beneficial to them and saves time and travel and stuff like that. That's kind of where WPC is looking at it.
Sorry, the difficult part is winter, because you've got to keep it inside to keep it from freezing. Well, the same happens with garbage trucks, we need to keep those inside so the electronics work, same with sanders and plows, they need to be kept inside. So there's, it's going to fill up.
Do you anticipate any staff being in that storage shop, or just storage?
No, it would not be manned, I mean, there would not be anybody there full-time. It would just be, they'd go there to pick up the truck, I mean, and there is kind of an office there, and we might look at maybe making a little lunchroom out of it, to where rather than them having to drive, throw it out to WPC to have lunch, they could just go there, have their lunch, and then get back in the collection crew, and then go back out on the field. So, just really economies of scale there for everybody.
Do we think it will affect the value of the sanitation building if we don't include some of that extra, like, if somebody need that for parking?
You're talking like the south, the south area?
Yeah.
So we, sorry, we had those three sections appraised separately.
Okay.
The weld shop come in at about $69,000. It's pretty a low amount, relatively speaking. And then the south lot was, I think, $100, $150,000.
So I understand that the values were split out, but I'm just wondering, like, does it make it less desirable for somebody to not have that, or do you think that most people who would use that building would not?
Right, what we're seeing right now, and this is just a small scale, because we've only spoken with Metroquip, they're, they want something a little smaller. There's a lot of asphalt down there, a lot of parking, because that's what that was, for sanitation, had a lot of trucks parked, and I think that's a huge liability to a lot of people, because that's a lot of asphalt to maintain. But it's something that we could always revisit down the road. I always worry about getting rid of right-aways, especially like Humboldt Street. If we ever want to open that back up, that's, that'll be hard to get back.
Yeah. And so the intent is that we would put a fence there on the south property, there on the right-of-way of Humboldt, and that would divide that property in two, so.
That makes sense.
Okay?
So that is one of the main considerations, other than like WPC or other departments being able to use it and stage, it's maintaining that right-of-way?
Yes.
For future?
As well as our will.
Potential.
Yeah, we've got a booster station there as well, yeah. The next one is the street department, 1080 South First, and so we had this one appraised in 2017. The appraisal value on it was $645,000 for the shop, office building, and the lot. And then also, we have, there's a, there's a storage lot that is basically kitty-corner right there, just south of that property, that was appraised at $33,000. If you'll notice, in the upper left-hand corner, or the, let's just call it the If you'll notice, in the upper left-hand corner, or the, let's just call it the northwest corner of the property, there's a little bit of a jog taken out of the property, that is one of the city wells. And so, when this was originally appraised, it included all of that corner. However, we are going to be doing a deed that itemizes that corner out, because that is one of our wells.
Do we need part of that parking lot too?
It includes enough, it's like a 60-by-80 lot, that'll include room for a generator and parking for a couple of trucks, and then fencing around it to help protect it. So, it includes that. There are a couple other challenges with this piece of property, there's a right-of-way that goes across it for the Oregon short line, and we're working with the railroad company right now to get them to quit claiming that to the city. It may or may not cause some challenges, but that's something we're trying to get resolved as soon as possible. It sounds like they're pretty open to quit claiming that back to the city, so. On this one here, we would recommend surplusing this property. ISU was originally interested in leasing it from the city, however, they've changed their direction and are no longer interested in that. And so, knowing that, then our recommendation is to go ahead and surplus the property. One of the big questions we have for you on this one is whether or not we try to auction both of these properties off as one, or auction them off separately. My recommendation would probably be to sell them as separate lots. If somebody wants both of them, they'll bid on both of them, but it kind of gives us more opportunity, I think, if we do them as separate lots.
Could we get stuck, though, with the parking, and somebody buys the building, and then we're stuck with something that really is not that?
Well, they're two separate lots. You've got the one where the building is at with the parking lot, and then you've got the other one that's just a vacant lot.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, if nobody buys the one, or nobody gives us the minimum price on the vacant lot, then we go out to whatever means you guys feel is appropriate to dispose of these, whether it be just go out and start negotiating with people, or whether it be the city.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, would it be a good idea to keep them together? Because then whoever wants to buy the building is also buying that, and then we get rid of it instead of being stuck with a lot that then we're-
Bring more money separate. It'll sell, it's just a matter of how much it brings.
Right.
Linda might, if it's cheap enough.
I want to be down there.
You want to link the lot down there for-
No, seriously, will it? I mean, who would want-
If you go cheap enough, it'll sell.
It'll sell.
Cheap enough.
But the idea, even if you sell them separately, if someone is interested in both, they can still do that.
Sure.
It doesn't preclude that.
Yeah.
So, I think if you've got somebody who wants that, but if you make them take it, then I think you lose leverage there, because then they could say, well, if I have to take that, then, you know, this is the last I have.
If it were congruent to the other lot, then I could see maybe doing them together. But where it's kitty-corner, and across the street, and across the intersection, I just see it being more of a hindrance.
If somebody buys it separately too, I would think that they would have an intent to put a building on it, some kind of a shop, which would be beneficial to the city. So, we just make somebody buy it just because it's there and-
It might just sit there.
Okay.
Okay?
Kind of my thought.
So, the next item we want to talk about is how to do the surplus options, how to do the auction. So, I'll tell you right up front, I am not an auctioneer. I do not have expertise in auctioneers. I love going to auctions, but I do not claim to be an auctioneer.
I heard Jim was though, I've heard that she was good at it.
I can talk pretty fast.
For you.
So, if any of you are auctioneers and want to volunteer, that's great, but we looked at some different options that are available, and one of the first ones we looked at was the third-party auction house. I don't know, I'm necessarily going to mention any names, but we do have a local auction house who committed to us that they would do it, they would charge us $75, or $750 for advertising costs, and then the cost of the auction would be 6% commission. If it does not sell for the minimum price, they would just charge the $750 advertising cost, correct? And in doing this, they would do both a live and an online auction. Another option that we could look at would be the city staff conducting a closed bid process. Advertising costs are undetermined, just kind of depends on, maybe we use Logan, or maybe we use an advertising, local advertising company to help advertise this. Potential for no commission costs, and basically, we would just tell everybody they needed to submit us a closed bid, and then the day of the bid, we open them up, and whoever's the highest bid gets it. The next item, again, is the city staff conducts an auction. We don't have experience with this or knowledge of procedures, advertising costs are undetermined, and then there's a potential for realtor commission costs, if you have a realtor that brings somebody in. And then, the other option is lease the properties. One of the downsides of leasing the properties is the big question about maintenance. If we're leasing that property, who's maintaining the furnace, and who's maintaining the roof, and the parking lot? And so, that's kind of a big question that we really have, so.
So, quick question.
Okay?
So, if the staff conducts an auction, then you pay if a commercial realtor brings it, but not at the closed bid? Like, if they help represent some, I guess I'm confused, how does that work?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think, yeah, we don't exactly know how it would work. If a realtor, Jim, you probably have way more experiences than I do, but if a realtor found a buyer and said, hey, there's this property that's up for auction, and informs him about it and helps him submit a bid, then I would hope that that person would give a cut to the realtor. But I don't think that the bid that we received would actually pay a commission to a realtor.
So, you would specify that in your instructions, that there's no compensation being offered by the seller?
Okay, yeah.
Wouldn't we want them to be telling their customers and bringing people that are going to buy it? And if they're the highest bid, wouldn't that be to our benefit?
Frequently, we do an agreement with a buyer that they will compensate the realtor.
Okay.
It's a common practice.
And I mean, we could probably write this however you wanted. If you guys wanted it written to where if a realtor submitted a bid, that we paid a commission out of the cost, I imagine that's something that we could even write in the agreement, yeah.
So, if we were to lease the property, or a property, or all properties, can we not include in the lease that they are responsible for the maintenance of those things and take the city out of it?
We could. It just would be a negotiation, and it'd be a question that would have to be resolved at the time of contract.
Would we still have to insure them though?
Yes, they would still be city properties.
So, we would insure them? Ensure them through YCRIM, and it comes down through, I mean, the value is considered, but it's-
They would be required, or it would be strongly suggested at a minimum, that they have insurance on their own personal property within the property, but they would still be city assets on our insurance coverage. And as far as the lease terms, you know, depending on maintenance, and who does what, and who's responsible for fixtures, and furnaces, and things like that, we can write all that in, but then, of course, the lease price changes compared to what we do with those types of terms. So, the more we do, the less we, the more we do, the more we'll get in lease payments, but the more likely it is that we'll have expenses, so we would expect higher lease payments. All those things can be done.
I have another question. So, if we were to say, okay, let's sell it and use closed bid, and then the reserve's not met, then could we still go back to the third party and have them do a live auction?
Sure.
Okay, I'm just wondering why we wouldn't do that first, if that would be a savings?
The code, from my understanding states that if you don't get any bids that meet the low bid, then you can, the council shall have the authority to sell such property as it deemed in the best interest of the city. So, if at that point, you deem that it's in the best interest to go back out for a third-party auction, then I think that would be something that you could do.
That's what the school board just did on the Bonneville property.
What you have to do is go through some auction process first, and if you have a reserve price that's not met, then you've at least satisfied that obligation.
Right.
I would argue that you're not satisfying that obligation if you set an arbitrarily high reserve price, so that you get that flexibility later.
But if it were a great value, and it was a normal, you know, price that you could expect, then I guess I'm just wondering why the recommendation to go straight to the third-party live auction, why wouldn't we just-
Bring more money.
You're going to get a lot more interest, you're going to get advertising.
But a lot more just to pay the commission, or-
People pay silly prices when the guy next to them bidding against them. It becomes an ego situation.
Well, I understand that, but is it going to fully recoup the commission? That's the question.
I think if you put the minimum bid at the value plus the 6%, then you probably do come close anyway.
Okay. I think it gets a lot more attention than the closed bid.
Okay.
It drives interest.
Sorry, that we discussed when we were doing that, is we didn't know how much we could advertise. We don't really have that mechanism to go after somebody in Hell of Montana or- And to your question, Mayor, if you're looking at that option, then I think that's a fair consideration for your minimum price, knowing that you have these additional expenses to dispose of the property.
You built those in?
We, yeah.
Or you would-
They're a consideration.
Right.
Yeah, I wouldn't set a minimum price plus 6%, you should just set a minimum price, the factors in that.
But you go a little bit.
Exactly 6, but knowing that there's additional expenses for disposal of the property. But for the most part, your minimum price really should be based on the appraisals and the other information that you have regarding the value of the property.
Could that include closing costs?
Sure.
So, in your packets, you guys also received another proposal from another real estate auction company, and their advertising costs were $2,500 pro-rate, and then they wanted 5% from the seller and 5% from the buyer for the auction costs as well, so, quite a bit more. Oh, that one wasn't included in there, okay, apologize for that, so.
When you do the live and online auction, what process is there for people to do their due diligence on that property? Because I've bought properties at an auction before too, and sometimes there's a little bit of that unknown factor where I hope I don't get a bad surprise. So, in a building like this, I would think people would not be willing to run the risk of a surprise if they are not expecting.
So, these guys have committed that they would be willing to show the building, show the properties to anybody that was interested in advance of the auction.
So, they can go in and inspect and do whatever they need to do? Okay.
And they would have, anybody can have access to the appraisals, those are public record, so if somebody wanted access to those, they could have access to those.
Well, I think we shouldn't be in the property business. We have enough of our own to manage without managing extraneous properties. And so, I would recommend we get through it, well, we've tried to get rid of one of them before. So, I'd say, if we can get them sold, if we can market beyond ourselves with the third party, put the cost of that into it for that, and just get this moving.
Okay.
And I would actually think that we should, I understand the other company is interested in leasing it, but it sounds like there's still a lot of details that would have to be worked out, and negotiating with them on whether it's triple-net, or what they're doing on their lease, you know, if they're doing the maintenance. So, I would think we should just try and sell both of them, and if so, then we're done, and it's back on the tax rolls, and we're good. And maybe the person who buys it will still lease it to them because they're doing it for an investment.
It may help the auction company to market that property, knowing that there's somebody, there has been interest in it.
And if it doesn't meet the reserve, we can then go back and negotiate on it.
Right, that's what I was just going to say, yeah.
So, if we were to lease the property, if, because I'm not convinced that not leasing it, if, I mean, $55,000 is probably more than we'll see in a tax benefit to the city, where would that dollar amount go to? Would it be locked up in, would it be general fund dollars? Would it be?
So, that, in my, probably Ashley would be a better one to talk to about this, but in my mind, yeah, this is the sanitation building, and those are enterprise funds, and that money probably have to come back into the sanitation.
That's what I would assume too. So, that being said, it's not going to help our tax to get that, it won't give us a tax benefit at all to do that.
Even the sale of that property, that money.
Yeah, that's, well, that will go towards the purchase of the facility that we purchased.
Which the sanitation helped.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
But putting it back on the tax rolls would have an impact.
Have an impact on it too, that's what I was, that was my question, to do that. I think we just cut all of our liabilities by selling and move on.
The red company down there, Harper's, has actually talked to me, it's been a year or so ago, they were interested in the building as well, so I think there's some interest for it.
No question, there's interest. The minute we said we might be looking at it, we had a lot of people jump up and want to lease and purchase and stuff, so.
So, what we'd like to do is come back to the regular council meeting on December 5th, and request that you declare the properties a surplus, also request that you set reserve minimums for these properties for the auction, and as we discussed, should the reserve minimum include a commission? Sounds like that's kind of your direction on that. And then, a course of action on what you want us to do if we do not meet the reserves, and then-
I would not signal what we will do with a course of action if minimums are not met. I think that's something, I think that's something we do after- Put a minimum down and then have the discussion. Yeah, and I just think that we signal our properties that probably not going to sell.
Okay.
And so, I just say, let's discuss that when the time comes.
You can come to the next meeting.
Definitely. Okay, and then, guidance on the street property, whether it should be one lot or two?
I think we were two. I think you want the street property to be two lots.
Okay. And then, do you have any preference on who we, how we sell this?
Use a local company.
You have the third-party auction house?
That's what I would do, a local company would make sense. I don't think you guys are auctioneers.
I don't want to be an auctioneer.
Maybe we'll have one right here, we got-
Okay, well, thank you guys for that. Do you have any other questions or comments, or?
I think that that's direction for you, so, super. Thank you.
Keep looking for more.
We are, we are.
Okay, we'll move to agenda item number eight, draft Ross Park conceptual master plan. Ross Park, Parks and Recreation Department staff will be present to review the final draft version of Ross Park conceptual master plan. Staff is seeking council's direction regarding the plan, its adoption consideration.
So, where's your Ross Park guy? Where's Peter?
That's his zoo.
Oh.
This is our Ross Park guy right there. He thinks John Banks, John Roger Brennan.
But I see the wetlands, isn't that?
Oh, yeah, that is, that's, yeah, that is, the zoo, the wetlands.
But you're looking at this other stuff down here.
We're just looking at here.
And this stuff up here.
Sorry about that, Mayor Bladen, council members. I know you guys have had a busy morning, and you've got the joint cities-county meeting today, so we'll try to make this as concise as possible. There's been quite a few steps and moving parts to this master plan process, and again, we'll try to be as brief and concise as possible to bring council up to speed, but we're very excited to present to you where we're at, and kind of where we've been, and where we've come, and thank you for the opportunity. Tiny bit of background and information on Ross Park. Ross Park is roughly 145 acres in size, approximately 95 of those acres are currently developed. It's one of the most, if not the most, popular parks in the city system, and it provides for a wide variety of opportunities for recreation. Back in the late 2000s, previous director Jerry Sepic initiated a comprehensive master plan process to help chart the future of Ross Park. It was based on community input and facilitated by a steering committee of community stakeholders at that time, and staff. These efforts- of, uh, community stakeholders at that time and staff. Uh, these efforts resulted in a conceptual site plan being developed in the 2012, 2013 timeframe by Jackson Land Design. Uh, due to, to the retirement of Director Sepic, the conceptual plan was put on hold, uh, at that time. Uh, I was hired in November of 14 and had some other, um, council and mayor-assigned priorities, so it's been a bit on the back burner. Uh, but since that time, uh, there've been a handful of meaningful changes in and around Ross Park. Of course, the South Valley Connector being built, uh, construction of the new animal shelter and adjacent Katie's Dog Park on the upper level, and the permanent restroom building and aquatics complex concession building, uh, built-in-house with park staff on the lower level, as well as removal of the houses at the south end of the park and development of the new Zoo Idaho master plan. So, due to a combination of these, uh, kinda major park changes and the time lapse, uh, staff, uh, has sought to bring the previous conceptual plan forward, uh, again, for a fresh look and solicitation of additional community input, uh, with the city's Parks and Recreation Advisory Board serving as a steering committee for this process, which began in the fall of 2018. So, a little bit on kinda where we've been and how we've kinda gotten here. Our, uh, goals in the process were to develop a long-term master plan for Ross Park based on community input and steering committee guidance that expands and maximizes the recreational opportunities, but also strives to maintain and enhance the park's natural beauty and historical features. We have three main focuses in working towards these goals. The first was to create a conceptual site plan for Ross Park, which identifies desired amenities and facilities. The second was to, uh, determine associated cost estimates for proposed improvements. And lastly, develop some implementation, uh, implementation strategies for ongoing city council consideration as funding may become available. A little bit regarding community input opportunities and, and what we received. Uh, between the months of January and October of this year, a substantial amount of public input has been solicited in a number of forms and formats, uh, and brought forward to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board on an ongoing basis for review and consideration, and incorporation into the draft plan based on board consensus. Uh, the community input, um, received has been summarized and included in your attachments, uh, for your review. And I know it was kinda one lump document, but it starts with these pages here. Um, the community input received and brought forward, uh, what I did was I quantified it into, into three categories. Um, the first two I'll cover now, and, uh, come on back to the third category in a bit. Number one was general and specific recommendations and suggestions. Um, examples of this would be, boy, it would be nice if we're doing these improvements to, uh, preserve as many trees as possible, or, you know, if we're gonna be replacing any playground equipment, uh, can we consider some inclusive playground equipment? So, this type of input, uh, was brought forward to the board and also will be retained by staff and referred to, uh, if and when specific amenities are pursued. Um, the second type of input, uh, was kind of recurring themes input, or the same types of comments that were kind of over and over again provided by multiple, uh, members of the community. Uh, examples would be inadequate current parking, uh, concerns about Second Avenue bisecting the lower park area, uh, the upper and lower park levels feeling kinda disconnected, uh, in the whole scope of the park. Um, this input was also brought, uh, forward to the board as received, and observations, uh, were that, um, generally this input, uh, served to support many of the improvement recommendations contained in the draft plan. Um, based on community input received, the pan, the plan was kinda built and fine-tuned, and I think it's a good time now to kinda go over kind of the high points of the plan. And I've got my handy-dandy, uh, yep, that, you can see that. Um, the first is expanded parking options. So, we are looking to develop, or kinda formalize and, uh, maximize this area here for additional parking. It's currently a parking lot, but it is a bit haphazard. It's not striped. Uh, I don't think the area is fully maximized, so that was one. Um, there's also, um, let's see here, some additional parking opportunities along some reoriented ball fields in the plan. This is a, a additional huge parking area here, which is, if you've ever been to, uh, Ross Park on a special event Saturday in the summer with a packed, uh, aquatics complex, you know that we could, we could use this parking here. Um, also, some additional was kind of out here in the, uh, the south end of the park and what we're calling the adventure area. Again, uh, just to serve the park, um, in, uh, special event circumstances. Also, we have a little parking lot over here, um, by the Veterans Memorial, which can be pushed out this direction here a little bit to gain a little bit more parking, uh, without doing too much harm. So, uh, we tried to, um, expand parking options wherever possible.
John, do you know how many spaces you added?
I don't, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna estimate in the 200 range.
So, in that first little parking area that you just showed us, we've got a building
On the upper park area?
In the, the lower.
Lower.
Right there.
Gotcha.
That little building that's kind of going north and south, right there.
Okay.
What is that building?
So these, so we've got kind of a group of buildings here that are kind of the, uh, the parks, the parks department will have, you know, kind of various pieces of equipment. And then outdoor recreation and team sports have their shop over there. Um, there's also another building, uh, and I think this is the one you were pointing to there.
Yes.
That, um, I, at this time, to my knowledge, is, uh, the fire department is utilizing for some of their older trucks and equipment.
So is there a plan when we make this parking lot and these, this, these facilities go away, you've got the fire department doing stuff, Parks and Rec has different stuff, is there a plan to move these buildings somewhere? Is there a?
There's, there's only one building, uh, in this plan that would, that we would lose. The remainder could be retained with the, with the revised plan.
Okay.
Um, and the one that, that we could lose is probably the one that's easiest to lose. It's just kind of a, I don't know, maybe a 20 by 10 narrow building that, it's not, it's got some equipment, but we can find some room for it.
Underutilized, huh?
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Another, uh, uh, high point of the plan was, um, we, we received a lot of public input, and I know there was a lot of input from the initial process as well, about a disconnect from upper to lower Ross Park. So, we, we looked real hard to create some options on, uh, providing that connectivity. And it was also very important to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, um, the community and staff as well, to create some Fourth Street, or I'm sorry, Fifth Street to Fourth Street to Upper Park to Lower Park opportunities. So you can, you can catch them coming down Fifth, you can catch them coming down Fourth, and those, those folks can, um, get themselves from upper to lower Ross Park or vice versa on one road. So, um, we came up with three different options that accomplish that. Um, the preferred option is using the existing Fredericale, and, um, we would need a very, very, this property, which was not, which was operational during the initial process, from what I understand, is, is now for sale, and is owned by, I believe, Ireland Bank?
Yes.
And, uh, we are planning on asking Ireland Bank if they would be interested in a small, uh, land donation. Um, it's, it's a very, very small sliver to create an opportunity where you can achieve that Fifth Street to Fourth Street to upper to lower connectivity, and not have, uh, some, any severe grades to deal with. Shoot on down here and access that existing Pleasureland parking lot and get you to the lower park area. Um, this option is appealing because there is a, uh, some development going on, on some land right here, and it's got Fredericale access to that land. They're doing grading now. I'm not sure exactly what the development is. However, we were approached by the project engineer who indicated a willingness as part of their development to allow our, um, easement and use of a tiny portion of their land to accomplish this connectivity here.
Joe, um, I remember in one of the, uh, open houses, I mean, as you said, many people talked about the connectivity issue, but there also was a negative part of that was blasting.
True.
Um, and how, in order to connect, that you had to go through a lot of rock.
Yep.
Um, are you gonna address that issue in these auctions?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that's, that's actually the main reason why this is the number one preferred option.
It's minimal?
Is because there, there is none.
None?
It's really fairly flat to kinda meander through here, and between city land, a small easement on the private land to get to this parking lot. The option, um, which, the only other option which retained, uh, Fifth Street to Fourth Street to upper to lower connectivity was, was via a road through here, kind of, uh, just south of the Veterans Memorial. This is the one that raised some concerns as to coming kinda down this way and connecting with the existing road that leads back this way, adjacent to the, uh, the shop buildings. That's where, I, quite a bit of blasting would have to take place, and that was a concern. So...
It's nice in the way that it lines up.
Yeah.
I mean, but it would take a lot of work.
It would.
Yeah.
And another option was coming in that way, but then trying to avoid that route as much as possible by coming up to this existing Avenue of the Chiefs, and then, and then jogging on over this way and connecting to the parking lot. So, that was kind of option number one to minimize those, or address those concerns. And option number two, which is really, really the preferred option, pending a couple of logistics to look into, is this one right here. It's really, really nice and flat through here, and...
It seems like to go up past the memorial, that kinda distracts also from the memorial, so.
That was, um, that was included in the initial plan, I think, uh, just because at that time, this business was operational, so it wasn't really an option. But, um, the other thing about, uh, kinda creating that connectivity and access from, from Fifth and Fourth is, I think it's an opportunity for kind of a grand entrance type of design with our, our newly branded city logos and Zoo Idaho logos, and, and, uh, kinda create a real sense of arrival there at that, at that connect, connection point. Another, uh, kinda major highlight of, of the plan was the recommendation to reroute Second Avenue. So currently, Second Avenue kinda comes in and always has, and kinda bisects, uh, the two lower areas of the park. So you've got the aquatics complex side with the skate park and a couple other ball field amenities, and then you've got Second Avenue, and then you've kinda got the zoo side, lower level zoo side, Pleasureland, and some other things going on here. So, this has always been like this, um, based on quite a bit of community input. Boy, wouldn't it be nice if we didn't have that to deal with, and we could create expanded trail opportunities, or just, uh, you know, kinda open green space areas to enjoy, picnic areas, these types of things, and also enhance the safety. Uh, say mom and dad are over here throwing horseshoes, and, and the kids wanna go over and visit the zoo. Boy, it sure would be nice if we didn't have to worry about them crossing Second Avenue. So be, these types of concerns. Um, so the proposal is, is to reroute Second Avenue. Um, I guess this would be west, and then run it along the railroad area. And it's, uh, there would be some tree removals kinda necessary through here, but, boy, I'll tell ya, once you hit about here and you look through, it's like a 50-foot swath that's begging for a road, nice and flat. So it really, it's really works well. And, um, so anyway, that was a major recommendation of the plan, and it frees up this whole center area to do trails, more open space, uh, a relocation of the skateboard park from its current location over to adjacent to the reoriented ball fields, yet still close to the aquatic, uh, complex staff and first aid opportunities. Um, it also allows for a relocated, uh, well, actually new, band shell that's kinda recreated in the existing skate park area is another recommendation of the plan. Um, kind of a, a recreation of what we have, except with kinda the modern technologies of electricity capability and, and, uh, sound and, uh, stage size and, and all those good things, so. Another high point was the connection of Avenue of the Chiefs. Right now, you come up kinda right here by the upper shelter of Ross Park, and there's a gate here, which is necessary because, uh, you know, it's a, it's a charge facility that the museum is running for us now by contract, so they have to keep security of the site. Um, what the proposal is, is to take and connect Avenue of the Chiefs on the backside of the Fort Hall complex, and then connect to the zoo side of Avenue of the Chiefs. And this is, and then we could, uh, just do some fencing to secure this area. Um, so this is kind of exciting for a couple reasons. First, with the connectivity. Second, uh, Peter Pruitt, the zoo superintendent, and I have, have some big dreams of an overnight camping area in this spot right here. And this connected Avenue of the Chiefs would provide access to that. Um, and there's a lot of grant funding out there, particularly with Idaho Parks and Rec to this effect for these types of things. And we envision a, uh, not terribly expansive, maybe eight to 10 spots. Um, uh, no sewer, because you have the, uh, public dump just over here on the, for, with the county that they can access. But imagine someone, I don't know, on their way to Yellowstone, or maybe this is a, that becomes a destination where we can get folks over here for an overnight stay or two overnight stays, and they can enjoy, uh, the museum and the Fort Hall complex, and the zoo, and the aquatics complex, and maybe play some ball. Maybe it's Sunday, they catch a free concert. So, kinda overnight activities where we can retain those folks for a couple of days to enjoy everything that we have to offer. So that was, um, we're pretty excited about that. Couple last things was the reorientation of the ball fields. So currently, you can see the infill areas of these two ball fields. We're proposing to flip the orientation of these ball fields, and then accommodate use of those fields with parking along here, which is also gonna double as school bus, uh, holding areas during times of field trip and whatnot. We've also got a couple of drop-off areas here for school buses and field trips.
John, did you get the bigger, better skate park than Buell?
Well, we hope, hopefully. That's, uh, I mean, it's all money-dependent and resource-dependent, but...
But is that included?
It is included. And, and with this reorientation, it creates space for this parking lot. It also creates space for the relocate, relocation of the skate park over to this area. And, um, we have one particular Parks and Rec Advisory Board member who's kinda teaming up with a ISU staff member and kinda leading the charge on fundraising. And, and I think when, if and when we do get some kind of an adopted plan, I think they might have some more success in fundraising. But, um, I personally, and I, I think the skateboard, uh, skateboard community would love to see a concrete facility, um, uh, with some, with some bowls and, and things. And I, I think it can be accomplished. We just have to, uh, hook up with the right entities, maybe the Tony Hawk Foundation, or some, you know, people like that. Um, and then, of course, the relocated, uh, band shell area. Um, lastly, uh, additional picnic areas. So, um, the, the park, we, we do have two large existing picnic areas on the lower level of Pleasureland and Aquatics Complex side, and then another large, uh, picnic area here in the upper level. We'd like to create some more opportunities adjacent to the newly developed parking over in this area, and then also out near the, uh, Adventureland with the BMX track and the RC racetrack. Um, we, we also envision, although, although we don't list them in the plan, is kind of throughout the park, uh, one of the, a lot of input we got was for kinda more just open green space areas to go kinda hang out, play, let the kids play. So maybe one or two table picnic kiosks, kind of spread throughout the park in strategic locations. Not reservable, but just folks that are there enjoying the park and kinda have... of having on a picnic table with a little shade and enjoy their day, so... So that's kind of the high, the high points of the plan. I'd like to now kind of get back to the third type of input that we did receive, and that was what I call the potentially plan-altering recommendations. So these were, this type of input was also brought forward to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board on an ongoing basis, and I'd specifically like to review this input and kind of the board's consensus direction that was received during the months of April, June, and August of this year. The first is, we did have some input regarding abandoning the proposed upper and lower level area connector road. Now, I think some of this, or a good portion of this, was when this was kind of the option, where we had that straight shot here, and there was going to be some disruption of the existing rock structure there. So with that said, later on, we kind of fell upon and developed this option when we were approached by this landowner that we would be allowed to kind of use a portion of their land, so... But we did get some negative input on that, where the community was concerned that the road would be intrusive, that it would not be, that it is not needed, and also could serve to dissect Pleasure Land Playground from the rest of the park. There was concerns with safety crossings of the road and also damage to the existing rock cliffs and formations or the beauty of the park. So we feel like, we have left this in as an option, but we do feel like this location here kind of addresses most of those concerns. But that input was received, brought forward to the board. The board was not in favor of abandoning the connector road. They felt that the disconnect between upper and lower Ross Park was a critical issue to resolve, and they directed staff to keep those options in, tagging their first option to be this one here, where it was more of a straight, flat shot rather than through the rock area.
So, John, do you think that alleviated those concerns from the residents here?
Yeah, I think...
To move that road there?
Yeah, because it connects to the playground. There's no recreational amenities through here where, when the road was coming, kind of a straight shot, you did have the playground on one side and areas where the kids like to play over here, so you did have that possibility of road crossings. I think this kind of addresses that. I don't want to speak for the residents that were concerned. I don't know if it addresses all of their concerns, but I think the intrusiveness and the dissecting of the pleasure land and some of the safety concerns and the rock formation preservation, those were addressed with that, so...
But it makes sense to, if we're going to attempt to get rid, move Second Street because it splits the park, it makes sense to not create another split, so...
Yeah.
The two main things I heard in that discussion were blasting and that dissection.
Yeah.
That you cut off this part, but I think, I mean, like you say, it may not address everything, but it addresses those two main concerns, so...
And, you know, there's a couple of hoops. It's privately owned land over here we would need, but it's a, Mr. Council President Johnston and I actually met out there for a few minutes and looked at the area. It's, we're not asking for much, so I think, I wanted to kind of get the council's views before I kind of quantified exactly the square footage and worked with Councilman Johnston to make the ask, but it's not a whole lot that we're asking for, and it may even, I don't know, it may even add to the, I don't know, positive feature to that piece of land, so... The second kind of plan-altering set of input we got was to consider not rerouting Second Avenue to the adjacent railroad tracks. The community input, it was thought by some in the community to be unnecessary, and specifically the residents that were directly adjacent were concerned with the potential relocation impact. So here would be the proposed relocated Second Avenue. So earlier in the plan, it was, the road was a tiny bit closer to those homes, and we were trying to preserve all of those maintenance buildings and shop buildings here. So with the input, what we tried to do to address that was put a green canopy here, so big trees that will mature and provide a nice privacy canopy, and we reoriented that road over, you know, 15, 18 feet. That's what caused us to have to lose one of those maintenance buildings, but it gives a little bit of a buffer. This is an older aerial, but there is now a residence that was, has been constructed right in this area. And basically, the most vocal concerns were raised by residents kind of living in this vicinity here that, you know, the potential impacts of additional traffic kind of coming through, which it, it's a valid concern, and it's, there will be impact. I don't, I'm not going to sit and deny that, but the vast majority of the community input that was received, both at community meetings and via surveys, which Kristen will cover, and also the Parks and Rec Advisory Board consensus direction was supportive of that rerouting. So the resident comments were discussed at length and taken into account, but the eventual direction was that the, kind of the vast community input tended to, and potential benefit tended to outweigh it a bit. That was the consensus from the board, so... So that entity remained as proposed, and we shifted the road a little bit and also listed a tree canopy to provide a buffer. The last couple of plan-changing sets of input that we got was consider adding a community RC track or remote control track, and that proposal was included in your community input stack. And the board was in favor of that. Kind of the feeling was, the more amenities we can provide for different parts of the community to enjoy, the better. And the proposed location for that was kind of out here adjacent to the BMX track in the Adventure Land area. Lastly, the last kind of plan-altering input or recommendation that we got was to consider downsizing or decreasing the size of the Adventure Land parking lot, which is substantial. The Parks and Rec Advisory Board was not in favor of decreasing the size of that parking lot. They, based on comments that there's just hardly ever enough parking over there, particularly during busy special event weekends, they directed staff to retain that. We also did a pretty in-depth community survey, and this is, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce Kristen early on. This is Kristen Dababatia, and Kristen's the brains of the operation here, and she's helped me kind of bring this forward through the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and the community input, and was a great help with the community survey that we did, and I would love for her to kind of go over the high points of that survey for you.
Okay. So this is the survey that we're discussing. There should be a copy of that in your packet. The survey ran from January and through early August, and we had a total of 250 submissions on the survey, which we thought was a pretty healthy number of respondents. A large majority of the respondents, 89%, were Pocatello residents, and we had a relatively even split between male and female, so there was 55% male, 45% female response. There was a good representation across the various age groups. The largest group was 25 to 34 and 35 to 44, as far as respondents. And then, when the respondents were asked why they do not currently use that park, 48 of them, 48% of them said there is a lack of enjoyable and adequate facilities and interesting and enjoyable things to do. However, 91% of the survey respondents were in favor of developing that additional recreation facilities and amenities down there, which we feel the results reflect that the majority of the community are in favor of the plan, considering what's been proposed. When asking additional, regarding, I'm sorry, excuse me, when we asked about additional recreation amenities and facilities that are most needed down there, the top five were additional permanent restrooms, which we've added, a couple of those already, two additional rock climbing areas, popular place for rock climbing, and then there was a tie between the third and the fourth recommendation, which is additional parking and additional play areas and variety of outdoor activities, which we feel are being addressed in the plan. And then, an additional picnic area and areas and shelters was, and then there are other, there's a total, the total results, of course, are in the survey, which you can refer, which we've provided for you to review. And then, of course, if you have questions, we're happy to answer those. 89% of the community respondents were in favor of relocating the Second Avenue. And in regard to the Ross Park Aquatics Center, the two highest priority projects that were listed were an additional water slide or adding a new feature like a flow rider or something like that. When reviewing the results, the staff and advisory board members observed that the park is heavily utilized and enjoyed by the community. And then, as you'll see, the survey results support and validate many of the plan recommendations. So I appreciate your time. Do you have any questions regarding the survey?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say, I've had the privilege of being able to attend the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee's meetings, and Joan and Kristen, you have just both really done a good job, and I've heard good comments from people in the community about the surveys that have gone out and the opportunities for public input, and so I just think you've done a really outstanding job with that, and I think people in the community have appreciated that opportunity to comment. And so, thank you very much for all of your efforts and all of your work on this project.
How were the surveys distributed?
We did online, as well as, John did a couple of, he went to the environmental fair, and then at all of the public inputs, we had paper ones available in case people wanted paper copies.
The vast majority were done online. We had a handful of done by paper, but not many.
Yeah.
Less than 10.
We sent out a half sheet with the web address and everything, so people could access it online, and that's where a majority of them did it.
It was on the city's main page with a link and also a link to the plan for months and months and months, several months, so...
And I would just add to Heidi's comment, I mean, I completely agree, and I'm not the liaison to the committee, but I got a lot of comments from people just about, I mean, excited about the plan, but also the process.
Yeah.
And congratulating you on the process, getting all of this input and making people feel like they were part of the plan, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are a number of meetings. I mean, you had, you read through those meetings, and I think you had 15 different meetings and open houses and opportunities, plus an environmental fair. I mean, it was definitely well-vetted throughout the community.
And much appreciated.
Has a priority list been developed for this?
No, I've kind of got my own. The priorities are more based on, I guess, feasibility and time. It would be really neat to be able to kind of do a couple of the meaningful projects early on. We've tagged this, I know it's a very broad range, but a five to 25-year plan. I may be long gone and retired before Second Avenue is relocated. It will be costly, and I'm not quite sure how we get there, but we have a roadmap of where we want to go as opportunities would present themselves. But assuming that we can get some cooperation with Ireland Bank, I think that the, creating the connectivity for Fifth to Fourth to upper to lower is a very doable project, maybe earlier in the process. We've got basically flat areas there that wouldn't be too challenging, and that would be a huge, meaningful improvement for connectivity of that park. The connection of Chiefs Avenue here, we've got existing road here, and we've got existing road here, so it's just this little connection point. And once we get that, I think we can start applying for some overnight camping opportunities. So again, not, I mean, everything costs, but not too terribly costly for the benefit. Another would be formalizing this parking area here and kind of maximizing its usability. Right now, it's usable, but it's not striped, it's in rough shape. I'm not sure that we're fully maximizing the space out here. And also, maybe creating this access roadway for the eventual relocation, should the plan be adopted, eventual relocation of Second Avenue. This would be another substantial improvement to maximize this area for additional parking. That's kind of in that 500 range. Basketball court, the addition of basketball and sand volleyball courts is another project that I think could be prioritized to be done early on. And then also, let's say that the parking lot follows later, but develop the BMX area and the RC track area as some of the zoo function that's currently in this area is relocated to the upper area and frees this up. These are all kind of more based on kind of feasibility, but those would be kind of the top priorities that would be hopefully early on in the process that would have significant impact and tackle the new band shells and the new skate parks and the relocation of Second Avenue's as opportunities present.
I think it's a good dream. I like it. Really exciting journey.
Yeah, I think... Thank you. So we've, thank you for hearing us out. I know it was a little bit lengthy, but it's, I really wanted to give you guys a good feel for kind of exactly where we've come and where we're at. So all of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board consensus direction received via public input was implemented by Jackson Land Design into this final draft plan, and Kristen also gave you 11 by 17 copies. The final draft plan was presented to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board at our October 3 meeting, and the board recommended that the plan be brought forward to council for consideration and further guidance, so therefore, here we are. And staff is seeking council review and input regarding the draft plan, and if council feels appropriate, staff would like some direction to incorporate any additional council direction that you guys might have or might like to see in the plan, if we've missed anything or something else that you would like to see added. We would love to be given, if council likes the direction of the plan, we would love to prepare a final plan rendering. We've been holding off on this to kind of get the council temperature on where we're at, because there's obviously a price attached to that, but if the council likes where we're going, I would love to have Bill Jackson prepare a final plan rendering to include any additional council direction. And lastly, if the council feels it's appropriate, we would love to bring that final rendered plan at some council meeting sometime in the future, based on council direction for a public input and maybe a potential adoption consideration.
Based on the conversation, I think you've done a yeoman's job here with this plan and all the input. From what I'm hearing from your report, the final plan probably needs to get rid of that second road that's deeper into the upper Ross Park.
Yes.
Just shouldn't even be there.
Yes.
Just put your initial plan of that one road. That's what I'm hearing out of this. I do have one question, this is a little detail. Why is it 325-foot fence on that outfield? That seems, Major League has 300.
If you're going to play here, you better be playing.
So we have a, Halliwell is kind of it for a large ball field, and we've got a lot of competing interests. The school district has developed kind of a Halliwell B, kind of on the other side of the outfield fence. We would love, we see that as probably the biggest ball field size need in the city. 300 is kind of a bare minimum for, you know, high school or, you know, kind of upper level ball, so we thought 320, there was enough... ball, so we thought 320, there was enough space to get the 325, and we would like to be able to accommodate the, you know, the older players or the grays if they wanted to practice out there, so that was a reason for that.
What I really like about this is you've got parking throughout the park. You don't have it in one location, and then you have to, and I know that Second Avenue is going to be expensive and going to maybe never happen in our lifetimes, but I personally would love to see Second Avenue moved, because we, there is some danger there with kids running back and forth, and adults, not just kids, I think kids are better walking across the street than adults are, quite frankly. And so I really worry about the safety of people crossing that road back and forth, and so I know that's expensive and stuff, but it would be interesting to see, at least as we move in forward, start looking for grants and opportunities there maybe to do something, because it's just splitting a park in half. This is our biggest, most utilized park, and we've got it split right in half with the road. I'd like to see that a little bit, but I like the direction. I think it's great.
I agree. I think this is really incredible. I think it's so exciting, and I mean, you've just accommodated everything, so I would really like to see us move forward with the final rendering as soon as possible. I do agree with Roger, just even eliminate from the final plan that, that road, because that has too many negative consequences, and you have a better option now, which you didn't have in the beginning, so I don't see any need to even include that on there as an option. But with that change, I don't see any reason not to proceed with a final plan. I think it's phenomenal.
You know, I think even with, I agree, even with, if you're not able to give some property there from that business that was there and utilize that, even without that, we've got the access right now to the, to get up to that roundabout anyway.
Right.
I mean, I would still try to do it, because it makes it more of a straight shot, but we have access to that area anyway, so...
I guess if those Ireland Bank logistics didn't work out, certainly you could still get the upper to level, upper to lower level connectivity. I guess you would lose the, well, not necessarily. I guess, it wouldn't be a straight shot. They'd have to come fifth, make a left, make a left, and then hit it, but still doable.
Still doable.
Not any different than our cemetery.
So, yeah. I like it.
Yeah, let's do it.
Does that need to be...
I move we authorize the Parks and Recreation Director to move forward with proposing a final.
Second.
Who are you calling? Wow. Cheatham was excited about that one.
He was.
We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Cheatham. Connie, would you please call the...
Johnston.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Third.
Yes.
Super.
I'm on the job, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Council, for your support. Thank you, Heidi, for coming along on the process with this.
This is definitely good. Thank you. Okay, with that, agenda item number nine, there has been a bit of confusion on what was expected on that one from staff and council a little bit, and so we're going to move that agenda item to a future date, and so we will not do that. And with that, we are adjourned from this meeting.
To reconvene accordingly.
What's that?
To reconvene accordingly.